So, good evening and welcome everyone to the City of Lake Forest Park City Council Special Meeting for Thursday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And I'm going to call the meeting to order and with that I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Okay, so I hear a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in the second. Is there any discussion? There are none. That is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, everyone. With that, we're moving on to public comments. Chief Harden, thank you, sir. Thank you very much, Mike. Okay, without we have Sarah Phillips. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Phillips. I live in Lake Forest Park and I'm the Chair of the Climate Action Committee and I wanted to talk to you just a little bit today. Although I don't know what to say to you because I think I feel like other people who've come here and sing the same song. So I'm singing the same song. But it and it is that we need a climate action manager. And I, you know, the other part of what I do is give you a weather report and this weather report is on atmospheric rivers. And those are going to affect us and down the road, there's going to be flooding and there's going to be trees that will fall down and power lines. And the climate manager cannot stop atmospheric rivers, but a piece of that job description is developing resiliency. Prior to any disaster, what is it that it takes to create a community that cares for one another and figure out how to proceed on these issues? So we have, we've talked about a climate manager and you all have accepted this. Some question about what a climate manager did and I wanted to just make sure that in this document which you have accepted, there is a definition of what the climate manager does. So you might want to look at that again in terms of, and I know my, my colleague, Dr. Bertram, also sent in a notice talking about what a climate manager does. One of the things that we've talked about a climate manager does is raise money, does grant. Grants. And I just wanted to list just a few of the grants that we didn't apply for. We didn't apply for the climate grants for low income resiliency. We didn't apply for the King County Swiffer grant for increased recycling. The CCA money for decarbonization, weatherization, the Community Urban Forest Grant and the Charge Everywhere Grant. And you know, I know you know this, but it's not enough to, and I don't know, did you, I'm taking a step back. Were you stunned by how much money Shoreline raised through grants? A million four hundred thousand, I think, was the number, but it's not enough to raise money because you all know you got to do what you said you were going to do in the grant application. That's what a climate manager would do in this arena is they would begin to talk about where you raise money. The other thing I think it's important to say is that if you want to have a levy lid lift pass. Citizens have to see what the city is doing. They have, there has to be outreach to the city doing things. Not in addition to, I mean, not in addition to what you're doing, but where you're going to people and saying, this is how you can save money in your own home. This is how we can work together to be a climate friendly city. Those outreaches and developing community is a piece of what a climate manager does. So I hope that you'll have a revelation and you'll say, Sarah's been right all this time and we're going to change the budget and we're going to get a climate manager. But I think the cost of not doing that is considerable. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Appreciate your comments. I did not read our, our rules for public comment because I knew that I did not need to this evening. So I do appreciate the the group that's here tonight. Thank you, Sarah. If there are, is there anyone else in the public that would like to make comment at this time? Since there's only one member of the public, that we are going to close public comment. All right. Thank you, everybody. We are moving on now to items for discussion, consideration and or action. We have a very full list tonight, folks. So follow with me. Item A. Resolution twenty-four nineteen eighty-eight authorizing the mayor to sign the professional service agreement with Southwest Solutions Group Incorporated for the Personal Duty Lockers. Project, Ms. Phillips, you have the floor. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Tonight I'm bringing a contract for signing to you with Southwest Solutions. And this is regarding the personal duty locker project for the police department for the City of Lake Forest Park. This is the second touch on this topic and you'll, you'll see that very little has changed in the subject matter since the first touch. But I'll just go through everything quickly since there's a lot of stuff on the agenda. So the, the current lockers that the police department is utilizing are very old, twenty years old. They're from when the place was originally built. They're made of poor quality materials that maybe, maybe they weren't even up to snuff when they were new, but at this point, some of them are broken, some of them are damaged, some of them don't close or lock properly. There isn't seating, there isn't ventilation, there isn't power. And there's, there is not proper storage for ammo either, which is a separate but related issue. And obviously these things need to be fixed, but like in a bigger picture. Having employee morale, like just having these types of facilities in place. Can, it can do a lot more than just give you the facility, but employee retention turnover, that sort of thing is a little bit tied to this topic as well. So for a number of years now, the chief and others have been working on a project to get new lockers. And what we have in place right now, this, this bid, this contract that we could move forward with. Gives us a whole lot of locker updates. The main thing is that these lockers will be bigger. The ones that the police officers are using right now are not big enough to hold all of their gear. Their vests don't fit inside, so they stay on the outside. It's obviously not the way it's supposed to function. These will have ventilation. They'll have a built-in bench with storage for boots, shoes, or whatever you might need to put down there. They will be power compatible. So in the future, there could be lighting, charging added, and they'll be made of higher quality materials. So presumably they'll last much longer, they'll be more durable, they'll be more secure. And you know, for all these reasons, we think that this is, this is a project that the police department needs and we have this contract. So we followed the city's purchasing policy and we bid it through the small works roster. And we received this bid from Southwest Solutions. And here's, here's the breakdown. There's about sixty-eight thousand dollars for the men's locker room, about eighteen thousand for the women's. They're going to add office lockers as a necessity because putting the bigger lockers downstairs in the locker rooms means fewer will fit. So there's going to have to be a few added upstairs to the offices, which actually makes sense. That's about seven thousand. And then the ammo room storage updates are eighteen thousand and then I've included tax on this tally as well. About eleven thousand. So the grand total there is about one hundred and twenty-two thousand. And it's, it's hard to say exactly what would be the right price since we only got one bid, but we did talk to some of our neighbors. And found out Linwood and Marysville did similar projects. Both of those municipalities are bigger than ours. So obviously their projects were bigger and more expensive, about five hundred and fifty-five thousand and three hundred and thirty-three thousand. If you took those numbers and extrapolated them to the size of our city and our police force, our, our police force is about a quarter the size of Linwood's. And our city's population is a third the size of Linwood's. It would be between one hundred and thirty-nine thousand and one hundred and eighty-five thousand comparable to what Linwood got. So that makes it seem like this is a good price. And I, I think that might be the last slide. It is. You have any questions? I sped through it. I know you have a lot tonight.
Thank you, Project Manager Phillips. If I may, just quickly, colleagues, this is a project that's been languishing for a very, very long time. Ms. Phillips has stepped up and taken charge of this. I would like to see this passed tonight if at all possible. Councilor Riddle.
As far as quantity of lockers, do we have additional capacity with this, with these lockers to add staff or I'm just curious, or is it just for our current department numbers?
There's, there's twenty-seven, twenty-eight lockers currently. This drops to twenty-two in the men's and five in the women's. And there was in the women's, I think, six, but it drops to five. The option of putting the lockers into the office spaces, so there would be five different lockers in the five different offices. Well, four different offices detectives would have to. What we would look at doing is with a staff of twenty-three FTEs right now, with the next budget that comes up, if we add two more, that's twenty-five FTEs. So downstairs with two women, they would be fine. We'd be fine downstairs if we started to grow. Because we would go beyond the twenty-two, everybody from downstairs would move onto their lockers in the office. So it would give us about five different options or five more spaces or options to, if we move forward beyond twenty-five FTEs. So yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I followed that almost.
Just to confirm, the new number would be thirty-two. The old number is twenty-seven for totals.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Colleagues, questions for Ms. Phillips?
Councilor Golding. Yeah, thanks. I'm wondering, did we get clarification on the quote if it's valid for thirty or a hundred and twenty days?
I didn't get clarification on that yet. My apologies.
But follow-up, if we pass it, assuming it's thirty, and if we pass this tonight, would that be sufficient time for the contract to be executed with the current quote?
I would have to defer that to.
Execution meaning signing?
Yeah, locking in the price on the quote.
We, yes, we would absolutely be able to do that. Yeah. And at the ready.
Yes, I think that this is a topic that is important to our staff and the operation and efficiency of our police department. It seems like we have a reasonably priced bid, even though we didn't have a large number of bidders on this project. I like the pictures too. This is our second touch and we've had no public comment or opposition on that. So for that reason, I'd like to move the adoption of Resolution twenty-four nineteen eighty-eight. Authorizing the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with Southwest Solutions Group Inc. For the Personal Duty Lockers Project. And now move to waive our three-touch rule.
Second on both.
Thanks. It's been moved in the seconded to waive the three-touch rule in regards to adoption of Resolution twenty-four nineteen eighty-eight authorizing the mayor to sign professional services agreement with Southwest Solutions Group Incorporated for Personal Duty Lockers Project. Any further comments, Councilor? Let's take the vote on the suspension of three-touch rule. Yeah, please.
And I just want to point out that again, we're waiving the three-touch rule because this is a fairly non-controversial thing. I think Manager Phillips has in fact described what the project is very fully and due diligence on the contract. So we really appreciate your work on it.
Thank you, Vice Chairperson Tony. Colleagues, any other questions? I would also stand point that it is, has taken on this as an additional responsibility. It's a project that I say indicated it's been languishing for two, four years. I'm sorry. Thank you, Chief. I, I'm worried even, even worse. Never mind, I'll, I'll leave it there. But thank you very much, Ms. Phillips, for doing this. Okay, any other further comments on the topic of waiving three-touch rule? Please signify by saying aye. Are there any nays? The ayes have it, it passes unanimously. Moving to the main motion, which is adoption of Resolution twenty-four nineteen eighty-eight. Is there any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor of adoption of Resolution twenty-four nineteen eighty-eight, please signify by saying aye. Are there any nays? The ayes have it, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Phillips. Excellent work as always. Thank you, Chief. Okay, with that, we're moving on to item B under section five, the twenty-two-four Lake Forest Park Compact Plan Update. Director Hoffman is going to take the helm here and I'm handing the chair's position over to Vice Chairperson Tony because of his excellent work on facilitating, facilitating the discussion. And yes, welcome. We could, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Okay. Director Hoffman, you have the floor.
Council, Community Development Director Mark Kaufman. Last Thursday, the council went through two elements, economic development, transportation. We have the luxury of Christina being back tonight for capital facilities and utilities and then a non-element titled parking lot. We're getting close. The last two elements for review are tonight. Christina has those two elements and slides, so I'll pass it off to her. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Hoffman. At your pleasure, Council, we can begin with the elements. And then we'll transition to the parking lot items where I will bring up my slide deck and you will also need a copy of the WDFW comments when we get into the parking lot.
Okay. Thanks, Miss Hayworth. And I guess we'll just get started as we always do with the capital facilities CF section. In the introduction, the first page, there's just a capital facilities definition broken out separately. That was the change. Any other comments on the intro section? All right, moving on to the goals and policies under CF one. The first comment was mine, which is, oh, actually it isn't mine. It's about the would waste pickup be capital facilities provider? And again, to define capital facilities, since the city doesn't provide it, it's not considered a capital facility unless we were to start our own dump or something. All right, the next one is mine. I think, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Council, I believe it is the Shoreline Fire Department now, not the North Shore Fire Department. Okay, great. Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right. Towards the, towards the, yeah, and then that may change, but for now it is. Yeah. Down towards the bottom of the page then. Sorry, go ahead.
Councilor, good. I'll let you.
So possibly, and so you, since that's a moving target, maybe put in the responding fire authority because that would include whoever, whoever that would be, it would include North Shore or Shoreline, or if it was named something else, it's the responding fire authority. We use, we use that language in myths and things. This is a suggestion.
Yeah, I'm not really sure how to respond to that, Ms. Hayworth. Is that, is that something that we could do? Or it doesn't need to be named?
So because you're, you're adopting by reference, a plan that has been prepared by an entity for the, for the most clear policy guidance. I would definitely recommend having it named. I did look it up. It's currently the Shoreline Fire Department. It's something that could be verified on an annual basis for when, whenever you do your docket.
All right, thank you. I think we'll just keep it for now and that way if we need to update it, we will. All right, towards the bottom of the page, broadband, because it shows up in a couple of different places, including the utilities one as well. So does somebody want to take that comment? Because I think there's a typo, download speeds of zero, zero megabits per second in the comment doesn't seem to make a great deal of sense.
I'm sorry, that should be one hundred.
Oh, it's one hundred. The, the point be, the, the point that this commenter is making is of course that the speed should be higher for doing any kind of real business. So.
Yeah, yeah. And so is my comment is we both do work from home in my house and having higher speeds is, is pretty important to being able to do our job simultaneously. So I think if we're going to be promoting the option for more in-home businesses or just more businesses in general, I think having a goal of having higher speeds in our city would be important.
I'd suggest to, to put the, put, so for example, the capital, capital facilities, there is a definition for it under the section. Maybe putting the broadband definition there so other people will know what that is, the layman.
I think so if we, if we want to stick with their FCC's definition, I mean, we can just add the definition if we want to go above and beyond that definition. I think we need to be very specific.
Okay. Well, there's something intriguing in your code, in your comment about how we should define a higher threshold for broadband services elsewhere in our municipal code. Do we actually define it now?
I don't recall. It's been a while since I read the whole municipal code, but.
I don't think so.
Perhaps we should consider the current language and then adding, it, it says investigate ways to improve broadband services, including evaluating feasibility of partnering or providing broadband services and say something as well as higher thresholds for broadband services in our municipal code, something like that. So we could just add that additional clause and then thought is captured as part of our policy statement. Yeah. We don't have to put a number. Exactly. We just want better.
Yeah, we want better. So just a, yeah.
So Christina, did you get that? Oops.
Yes, so I have as well as higher thresholds for broadband services. Do you want that specifically addressed in the municipal, in the municipal code or just left?
Yes, we can just say higher, higher thresholds.
Yeah, I think it's, it's giving our goal, it's giving us guidance as we move forward in this topic. Yeah, that's good.
Great, thank you. All right. So do we need to actually put the definition of broadband services then in there?
I guess because we're saying we're using higher thresholds, I guess. For broadband services, that kind of implies that we're above and beyond, beyond the FCC's definition of broadband. Which they've been upping, you know, as technology is increasing.
Yeah, I'm guessing it won't hurt. So, yeah.
Yeah.
I still don't think that the layperson knows what the speeds are.
Well, that's true.
Yeah. This is just a, sort of a safeguard that they're being sold broadband and it isn't that we, you know.
We want better. We want better than that. We won't dig a bit, but you know.
Come on, fiber internet.
Okay. All right. So I think that was CF one point seven, CF one point eight. Any policy indicate these new developments and future growth cover the added costs of new capital facilities needed to serve their use? Somebody want to comment on that?
That was my recommendation and the reason why I wanted it is we don't have the impact fees per se, but I want to make sure that as we possibly pursue higher densities and we need more infrastructure, that the, the, the developments that are triggering that need cover those costs. So that's the nature of this policy. I think there's another, I did it at one other place also. So that was my rationale.
Councilor Golden. Yes, so I had a similar comment on three point three, but kind of from the other direction. I think impact fees is or something that we should be deliberating because there are pros and cons. And one of the cons of impact fees is that they're likely to get passed along to the home buyer, which would, there's a tension there between having the developer pay for new infrastructure, but also keeping the housing more affordable. And so I'd rather not have something so direct as to say there will be impact fees. I'd rather it be, we will consider impact fees. But then again, I think Christina's comment in three point three is that we are already charging impact fees. So maybe if we can get clarity on that.
Ms. Hayworth?
Let me skip down to three point three. So there are, I believe there are some impact fees that are currently authorized and I can look that up really quick. Which ones? There are other options for assessing fees. Some places use like a SEPA mitigation fee, which can be really effective. For example, if it's not one of the enabled impact fees that you're trying to get some credit for. But I believe you have, let's see.
Attorney Pratt, did you have a comment on point?
I think she's waking up.
That language that you're reviewing, I think it should, should say that new development should pay their proportion. Because they, it's difficult to say they have to pay one hundred percent of new growth because sometimes that is a deficiency. And new development cannot be made to pay for deficiencies. So if you just add language that pay their proportionate share, that would avoid that issue.
In both CF one point eight and CF three point three?
Wherever you're asking them to pay for all of new development.
Okay.
I think, I, I think three point three says what we want to say more directly and uses the proportionate. What I like about one point eight is this is looking at us. You know, that, that we are providing capital facilities that are necessary. So this is kind of on us. Like, how do we make sure that capital facilities are there? And that they're in a place where they can be upgraded, you know, so that if new development comes in. So for me, I want to say something along the lines of to, you know, just to monitor, you know, these capital facilities investments to assure we know what state it's in, in the event of development or something along those lines. Because I think one of the things is we, as, as Ken mentioned, if there's a deficiency, we can't have them pay for the deficiency, but we don't know if there's a deficiency unless we're tracking it.
I think they're complimentary provisions, but I do appreciate the suggestion that we insert proportionate. Because we're not trying to create undue burdens, like fix the whole deficient system that's not quite ready to hook you up. So I think we could insert proportionate in front of costs in one point eight. And I do think the proposed alternative language in the note for three point three. Maintain an appropriate impact fee schedule for new developments to pay a proportionate share of capital facilities that it needs. I, I, I like that alternative language. So those are, are my comments.
Yeah, that sounds like a reasonable compromise to me. So yeah, I'm happy with adding proportionate.
Right.
I agree.
Okay. All right. So Ms. Hayworth, did you capture that?
Yes, I've got proportionate popped in here. We're assured that new development and future growth bear their proportionate share of the costs of new capital facilities and infrastructure to serve their use.
Great. And also the CF three point three language, I guess the consider comment was, was acceptable. Right, thank you. Okay. So skipping back to CF two then on the next page. The first comment is about are the utilities such as electricity, natural gas and fiber optic considered capital facilities? They're not so, because they're not city-owned, so they're not in the table. My comments, the next one about local level of service, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew what LOS was. So at least one time spelling it out. I realized it is actually in the title itself is, but, but just showing up in the table as LOS, I thought it would be good to just make it really clear. Okay, and I think there was a, oh gosh, table that described all the different levels of service, A, B, C, and D. I don't think it's included in here, but Ms. Hayworth, do you think that's necessary?
I think it, I it might, it might be helpful, but most likely only in the transportation element. And I don't remember offhand if that is listed in the level of service sidebar or not. I did put kind of a shorthand definition for what we're thinking of when we're talking LOSC versus LOSD. And then of course, there are some similar shorthands for AB and E and F. These are pretty hot, high level of service standards. A lot of places are adopting lower LOSs like D or E just because of the, the costs to improve intersections to maintain these LOSs.
Understood. Thanks for putting those definitions in. I'm just hoping that, you know, anybody who's reading this would be able to make a quick reference as to what those letters stood for. So you're right, I think they are in the transportation section and so we can make a reference back to that day. And so we can make a reference back to that table. Okay. Any other comments on this page, council? Moving to the next page, just one comment. The comment was added. So hopefully that addressed the issue. I'm not sure what the issue was in the first place, but go ahead.
We're talking about 2.6.
2.6.
Yeah. So we need to insert proportionate. It, it duplicates some of the language in 1.8.
Good point.
So we just need to insert proportionate.
Okay. Any other comments on that? All right, moving forward. Goal CF 3, CF 3. This is, we've already made the change in CF 3.3. Does anybody have any further comments on 3.3? Okay. Then at the bottom, there's 3.9, new policy. Develop a capital improvement plan that will improve the equitable distribution of services throughout the city. Anybody want to take that one on?
Yes, that was my suggestion and I think it's just, it's consistent with some of the other chapters of the comp plan that we're looking at where in the city is in need of more historic, has been historically underserved.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Golden. All right. So moving on to CF 4 on the next page, there's a Department of Fish and Wildlife recommendation at the bottom, which I'm thinking that basically sea, sea level rise isn't really going to be an issue here. So if we could strike that, if anybody has an objection to that. But apart from that, the, the rest of it is understood why we would want to consider those factors.
I think that's reasonable.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Anything else on CF 4? All right. Moving on to CF 5 then. The, there weren't any comments on this page. Did, did anybody come up with anything they wanted to address? Move out of CF 6 on the next page then. New policy CF 6.5 at the bottom. And when planning newer expanded capital facilities, consider maximizing renewable energy production, et cetera. Somebody want to take that?
This maybe was supposed to say can. So that's, that was my comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. I was rereading and I think maybe I missed a word when I was sending it out. My stall. But yeah, I think, yeah. We should always be considering renewable energy where we can. And I think there's supposed to be, and where unused production, where there's unused production, we can support other capital facilities. In other words, we can share amongst our capital facilities. So we have the, the solar panels go in at public works. That might be able to service, you know, other areas if we, if we get connected that way.
Right.
We're not quite there yet, but.
I guess the wording is just a little awkward.
It turned out a little awkward, didn't it?
Okay. I mean, what, what you're, what you're trying to say is basically where production is under or unused.
Yeah. First maximize it when we're doing the capital facilities and then recognize if there is, if there is a additional capacity from that, that that should be used elsewhere in the city, else other capital facilities.
Right. So it might be even just putting a comma after production.
Yeah.
I think, I think Councilmember Riddle wanted to put in an and in front of where. So we're planning newer expanded capital facilities, consider maximizing renewable energy production comma and where there is unused production support that can
Support other capital facility.
Support or be shared with other capital facilities that or and consider where there is unused production support and sharing with other capital facilities. I'm, I'm editing as I think. So that's not always good.
There we go. No, I'm, I'm appreciating you guys taking my late night comment, making it relevant.
Okay.
I think what is written up there is pretty good.
Yeah. Okay.
Close you.
Everybody okay with that? Okay. All right. So I think we're done with capital facilities at this point. Does anybody have any comments overall? All right. Let's move on to utilities. There were no comments in the introduction. The first comments are on goal U1, service quality. And the first one was an update. Does that address the issue? Okay, great. Thank you. All right. The second comment under U1-5 is finding consistent language again with the concept of broadband here. So high speed internet connectivity, is that a synonym for broadband or do we need to break this one out? All right. It's been changed to broadband. Thanks, Ms. Hayworth.
Yeah. If we're throwing in the definition in the capital facility section, I think it makes sense to just stick with that one.
Okay. Does that address the point that we were made?
I have a question. Is internet only by via broadband? Because if it's, if you get it in other methods, then.
I believe broadband doesn't identify how it gets to you. So satellite dish, standard cable, fiber, it covers all of that as I understand it from the FCC definition.
Okay. Just a question.
We can double check, but I, I don't recall it being specific.
All right. Thanks. Okay. So the comment at the bottom then, U1-7, new policy. Does somebody want to take that?
Yeah. So so I think one of the things is because we're so reliant on the internet these days. I mean, people's medical equipment is connected to the internet. I mean, there's so much going on that I, I wanted to put something in here that, that we have a contingency plans for may, you know, that are in place to maintain these services. And usually that'll be with our partners, but that we dictate that they have to have it back online a certain amount of time and so forth. Just because that service disruption can be dangerous. And if we have people who are working from home, they can't work.
Yeah, exactly. As we saw with our disruption here at City Hall a few months ago. Yeah, exactly. All right. Anything else? Okay, moving on. Going on to goal U2. This isn't called out specifically by comment, but there seems to be a red underline under policy U3.5. I'm sorry, I skipped U2. I should probably stop. Any comments on U2?
Great band.
I was waiting.
Oh, sorry. All right. How about U3 then? There's, there's, there's that one policy, U3.5, which seems to be a new policy, but isn't specifically called out.
Yeah, that's, that's my policy. And again, it's just to reinforce promoting undergrounding or upgrading of services where they're targeting specifically where they're prone to repeated disruption. So I know we do it oftentimes during a construction project. It's something that we consider. But I think treating those problem areas might be helpful as well.
Councilmember Good.
That's almost identical to U3.4. So maybe modify U3.4 instead of adding another one that's almost identical.
Right. So.
Well, I, I guess that I read it as a little different, but 3.4 is, is just a general throughout the city, let's promote undergrounding, grounding where it's physically and financially feasible. The financially feasible parts really we're struggling with right now, but eventually we'll get there. And 3.5 is sort of like going back to the sort of the equity, there are areas of the city that are more impacted by these outages.
Right.
And so taking away the, these financially feasible part for that. So that might be someplace where we focus if we can get some grants or something like that.
What about, what about using the word consider? Instead of promote undergrounding or use the word consider upgrading services where services are prone to repeated disruption?
Since our service, we're not the service provider for electricity. I don't know if we can, if we can consider that. I think promoting it is basically working with our providers to ensure that this is happening. And that they're paying attention to this. I don't know if anyone else has a different thought on how this relates to the actual providers.
And Councilmember Riddle, I, I exactly see your point. And would it, would it help if we just made policy U4 promote the undergrounding or upgrading of utility services where physically, financially feasible, especially where services are prone to repeated disruption?
I like that.
Would that work for you?
I mean, it, it, it isn't as strong, but if that's what the council is going to approve, then go that way. But.
All right. It's a compromise like everything. Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Hayworth. All right. Any other comments on U3? Okay, U4, there weren't any comments, but actually there was, there's one at the end on the back page. It's a WDFD, Department of Fish and Wildlife recommendation. Any comments on that?
I like the revised language reduce and prevent sewer overflow events or encourage or consider ways to, because reduce and prevent is an implementation action, I think. So some language of policy. But I do like the, the reduce and prevent sewer overflow events. Don't know that we've lost anything from from that. We could say well, the citing of new sewer infrastructure should be discouraged within flood prone areas. So that would be the second sentence.
What do y'all think? Seem reasonable? All right. So I think, let's see, Ms. Hayworth, yeah, did you capture that? Yeah, there we go. And we're going to get rid of that one. Right. Right. I like it. Okay. So on to U5, our last section. The first comment, and there's another Department of Fish and Wildlife comment on adding future climate related impacts, which makes sense to me. All right. And finally, on the last policy, U5.5. The encouraged transition from natural gas energy uses to electric energy for homes and businesses. There's a couple of things in here and I don't know if we want to really unpack it fully, but it does reflect from our surveys from the Climate Action Committee, what the, what many residents in our city would like. But I would want to hear your comments on this, especially.
So a question I have, it seems I 2066 will be the one initiative that does pass. That's the natural gas initiative. Does that impact what we're allowed to say? Like, are we allowed to call out natural gas specifically?
I would need to do a little bit more research on this. And maybe check in with city attorney Pratt.
Right. I was almost going to make the comment that it's for the courts to decide, but yeah.
I, I actually, I don't know if it would prevent you specifically from calling out natural gas. I do recall in one of our previous meetings, we, I think we use the term combustion based energy or something similar to that.
Attorney Pratt, you came back on.
I was just going to say I'm happy to help look into it. I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we are okay if it's, we're not mandating a transition. We're encouraging a transition in. And we have not said whether that's just for new construction or anything like that. So I think the language is general enough that it doesn't get crosswise with 2066 because it could be some incentives based approach or providing a pass through of a grant program that we get or something like that. So because I think the big issues are financial. So I don't know if we want to say add, you know, something like as appropriate, but or something like that. But, but I do think that the issues are fundamentally financial. So.
So I guess we could just leave it as is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I think we're good unless anybody has any other comments on utility section. Okay. So I'm going to turn it back over to you, Ms. Hayworth, about the parking lot.
Okay. Please pull out your copy of WDFW's comments. Because we will be referring to that and I will switch to my slide deck. All right. So we are gonna, this slide deck covers the, the parking lot issues that were identified. The next steps for the project and what the schedule looks like for the rest of the year. So there are a few different topics. I'm hoping that we can power through the parking lot. But there are, there are several topics. So do let me know if there's anything you'd like to table for a future meeting. Because I definitely do also want to cover next steps and schedule. All right. So the parking lot items that we're going to talk about are WDFW's comments and the, the, in particular, the ones that pertain to the land use, environmental quality and shorelines, housing and parks, trails and open space elements. Then we also got some revised language related to the future land use designations that we will go over. The last two topics are discussing equity versus pivoting more towards justice and language that's more supportive of justice within the diversity, equity and inclusion realm. And then some questions on parks planning. So WDFW submitted comments on October 31st. You've already seen their comments presented in the capital facilities, utilities and transportation elements, but they do have comments in these other four elements that we had already discussed by the time we had gotten comments from this agency. And so what I've done is I've just gone down the list of DFW's comments and put a recommendation in here to, to talk through how, how we could address these comments in the draft plan, given where we're at in the process and how much time we have left through the end of the year. So if you, I hope you all have your DFW comments out. We are going to start with the, everything is just all in order. So we're going to start at the top with the land use comments. Their first two comments are.
Ms. Hayworth, sorry to interrupt, but I think there's a quick comment here.
Yes, I think a few of us are struggling to find the list of DFW comments.
With the November 7th packet, agenda packet. At the end of the comprehensive plan, red line sections.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Okay. I'll give you a minute to get all on the same page and let me know when I am good to go.
I have, I have.
It's at the bottom.
All right, everybody, okay? Okay, please go ahead. Thank you. Sorry about the interruption.
No, that's quite all right. So for their first two comments, I'm recommending that we consider these implementation actions that the city can take care of either with its 2025 updates. These are the, I believe the mapping ones. Or at a future date, you know, depending on exactly when it makes sense to. Or at a future date, you know, depending on exactly when it makes sense to tackle that. Similar with LU, their comment on LU three point one. Uh, I, this is reading to me as an implementation action. I do think that it's worth considering the potential impact of this comment and consider it when we are making some code updates. Code updates, as you all likely know, are also due. Um, and so this could be added to the list for code updates. Since there will already be some changes that need to be done.
Perhaps. If we add like so integration and expansion and connectivity in the natural landscape that kind of creates that sense of extending what what might already be there. Would the council be okay with adding that minor language to three point one?
The integration.
So encourage the integration, expansion and connectivity of natural landscapes.
Okay.
New land and roadway developments.
I think that's a good improvement.
Yeah, that's good one.
Okay.
Rather than taking the WDF, WDFW comments.
Okay. Alright, that sounds good. Um, I'm gonna be tabbing back and forth between documents, so bear with me if it takes me just a little bit longer to blow through these. Their comment on LU three point three, I'm recommending that we incorporate it for their comment. Does anybody have any concerns about that?
Um, we have a forest management plan that hasn't been updated, so perhaps we can add a frequency of updating that in as an implementation in our in our code.
I I would just strike annual or and say periodic.
Periodic.
Uh, update and implementation, so it stays updated.
Yeah.
And I think forest management plan is, I think, the term that we're, it is called at the moment.
Yes, it is.
So we'd want to use that.
Urban forest.
We good on that? Okay.
We're good on that, um, as long as you you all are good on that. My, they they had some similar similar recommendations on LU three point five and three point six, which is a change toward incentivizing some of these things. Of course, incentives are a fabulous way to encourage something to happen. But I I just want to point out that incentives come with a a perceived cost potentially, you are theoretically giving something up in that incentive or allowing a little bit more than you otherwise would. And so I, I I want to make sure that incentives, that moving towards incentives to achieve these policies is desirable, um, and assuming that's the case, then I would incorporate their notes as recommended.
That's more good.
I would suggest to say and consider incentives and consider incentives. That way we've addressed their concern because it would be great to have incentives. But we don't want to leap into that as if we will automatically have them.
Councilmember Good.
I was just gonna suggest, uh, using support and incentivize or support or incentivize.
So what what do you think about consider incentives?
That's fine too.
Alright, so I think we're good with consider incentives.
Okay, in three point seven, so they have recommended, they've recommended a new policy. Uh, or a new addition to this policy, which is to specifically collaborate with developers to assess the true cost of mitigation planting versus preserving existing vegetation, emphasizing the long term environmental and economic benefits of retaining mature trees. So I'm not entirely sure exactly how the city would feel about being in this facilitation role or leading this kind of collaboration with developers. I know other jurisdictions have like a development advisory group where something like this would be a very simple addition to the agenda in something that kind of already exists for those cities. I don't know that the city of Lake Forest Park has something like that. Uh, and so thinking through how it would be implemented might be worthwhile to make sure that this is a policy that makes sense for the city.
So this is a Director Hoffman question.
With our urban forest planner, we already do the the top part in block recognition. To add the the red adds to the strength of trying to achieve what we're trying to achieve. But it makes it difficult to meet and understand. We could talk with a developer further. We can, that's collaboration. But as far as speaking the same language and the value and so forth, it's a mystery. I would offer that Drew would use I Tree, have that conversation. It's not mandatory and would involve more work. If that encourages preservation, it's a conversation we wouldn't mind having with the developer or property owner.
Um, something, if I can ask a question of you, would it create an undue burden for your department?
I'm gonna say something very nice, not with Drew here. He's well versed. If I were sitting in that meeting, yes, that would be an undue burden. Um, but as we're currently structured and staffed, it would not.
Thank you.
But I think one element that could be part of this is leaving mature trees can reduce onsite stormwater mitigation needs, you know, because the trees are actually large enough that they're contributing to stormwater mitigation. So I like that we're kind of collaborating with them to come up with creative ways of saving trees. And in the end, it may end up being something that gives them a benefit as well if they have to build a smaller infrastructure, things like that. So I kind of like the way this is written.
And it will improve in importance in time after we get through the climate element and the scope of work and what we added for evaluation of assets. This will make much more sense later next year.
That's fair. Anyone else?
Sorry about that.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Hayworth.
Oh, I, it sounds like this is maybe something that could be tabled for the climate element. Discussions around that, is that? Did I, did I pick that up right?
Councilmember Goodwood, do you?
Director Hoffman brought up I Tree, I, and that is a way to unemotionally gauge the value of trees, whether it's you know, uh, new trees or old trees. You know, it takes a certain amount of time for new trees to get to where the old trees are and it is a, it is an accepted way of putting value and uh, value on your existing trees. So I fully support I Tree.
But it may be the case where it is more appropriate for the climate element to basically address this directly as opposed to us trying to wordsmith this right now. So what do you guys think?
I think, I mean, we can put it in there and that can be something that they relook at since we're gonna be revisiting this as a as a update next year. I think that says collaborate, I mean if they don't want to collaborate, then 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 that's, you know, so it's not forcing anything on anybody. It's just giving an option.
I'm getting head nuts, so I think we'll just keep the comment as it is. I mean, we'll 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 take the red language.
Okay, so then looking at their comment on five point six, this is just information, no action required. Their comments on six point three and seven point seven, I'm recommending that we incorporate. Um, and then on their their last comment in the land use element is in eleven point three. Discuss incentives and implementation of this comment and then if it makes sense, incorporate as recommended.
Anybody have, oh, go ahead.
On seven point seven, do we want to take the pedestrian and bicycle and sort of go to active transportation and wildlife?
Yes, that was, that was a previous, a previous directive was to move away from head bike and toward active transportation, but that came after we had already gotten through the land use element, so they didn't, they didn't have that. Um, but yes, I will take care of that.
Yeah, but I'm okay with the wildlife.
Alright. Thank you. Okay, so I think we're good here.
Okay, any any concerns on eleven point three about, this is another incentivized, do we want to go back to this? Consider incentives for development?
Yes, I would say so. Because I do think, um, trying to, uh, maintain natural features to maintain ecosystem services is a goal. So I I think at least saying considers incentives and we can come back and look at that. We don't have, we don't have a lot of funds, but at least we can consider what might be possible.
Right, and I mean, those incentives, they could also be like to development bonuses, for example. Right, that's something that was discussed at length in the town center process. Those similar kinds of incentives could be available for other kinds of projects that that get to some of these things.
And I'm I'm not sure how these two work together on on eleven point three. Utilizing clean energy and reduce energy consumption and then incorporate natural features to maintain ecosystem services. I'm not sure how ecosystem services and clean energy and energy consumption are tied together, but just kind of lost.
I mean, I guess conceptually in terms of like progressing environmentally sensitive development, they could go, they, there could be some relation. This could also be its own separate policy, eleven point four.
Yeah. I I kind of agree with the comment because, uh, as it stands, the original one was just literally that first sentence. So is there somewhere else this could go? I mean, I agree with the sentiment in red, it's just, you're right, it's not necessarily appropriate here.
So Christina, could you possibly think of a place to where that fits? The consider incentives?
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm thinking maybe even at like three three point five talks about stormwater and low impact development, and I feel like that has a more direct connection with natural features and ecosystem services, since a lot of what we discuss is related to.
Better fit.
Okay, I'll 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 take a look and make sure that that's the the best place and we can certainly revisit this when we have our next review draft. But I'll move it to three point, I'll note it, move move to three point five for now.
And can we define ecosystem services? It's kind of a term I'm not familiar with, thank you.
Alright, noted. Uh, okay, that takes us through the land use comments. Um, does anybody want have any other questions or comments on DFW's land use related recommendations?
I'm not getting any takers, so go ahead.
Awesome, okay. Environmental quality and shorelines, this is another one where they had quite a few comments. Uh, and there are a lot of policy recommendations that can have some larger implications, so I I pull up my other sheet. Their first comment is informational, no action required at this time. They are, sorry about that. Um, they, in their second comment on EQ two, they have recommended a new policy. Which is related to acquisition. Computer, okay. Related to some acquisition in the this last part of their recommended language. This is something that's very expensive, as you all know, and so I wanted to, in particular, discuss the implications of calling out acquisition as a policy here, especially given the likely expense of purchasing property along the Lake Washington shoreline.
I mean, it's it's a lofty goal to protect the streams and the shorelines. I mean, it it could be, you know, consider, you know, where opportunities arise. You know, I think the other thing is to yeah, I mean, I, it's a cool goal, but we don't have the money for it, but as a policy, if if an opportunity arises, I'd love to be able to point to a policy to get a grant to do it.
So something like where opportunities arise, consider the acquisition of areas where salmonids seek refuge.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of open ended enough that we're not committing to anything, but it shows a desire, yeah, that works.
And then to clarify, we delete the first half, correct?
Right, I mean, this, it just seemed like that was a weird clone of these two sentences, so. I mean, I I get the point of the first sentence and we should be looking at those kind of stabilization methods, but this is really not the appropriate place, so.
Yeah, this is very much an SMP policy and I would be shocked if this was not already in your shoreline master program.
Yeah, we aren't building concrete channels anymore, so, yeah, yeah.
And I think if we add streams to the consider acquisitions, that would be. Again, I don't know when it would ever come into play, but it's nice to have that policy there in case it does.
So we good with basically, uh, keeping the second sentence but softening it to consider?
Consider and add streams or creeks.
Any creeks, right, got it. Streams, I guess, the more generic term.
Probably, yeah.
Alright, their comments, we have a second comment on EQ two, uh, which I am recommending that we rephrase so that it's more policy oriented and incorporate. It's supportive of low impact development, uh, and I think it's pretty consistent with other policies that we have already discussed. Wait, did I skip one? Yes, sorry, incorporate as recommended the lighting standards comment and then rephrase and incorporate the low impact development. Uh, so that it is more policy oriented.
I agree, since it's already covered in EQ six point two and three.
And it could be that we, so they 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 use the draft that the Planning Commission recommended, that was the draft that that was filed for state review. So they don't have the version where you've incorporated Dark Sky and Allen standards. So this this could be that we we go back to them and ask if that language satisfies the intent of the comments on these.
That would be appropriate, thank you.
Okay.
Because salmon are are neighbors. And you cannot shine into a neighbor's face.
Alright, I will make a note and coordinate with Director Hoffman on that. Um, anybody have any comments on the low impact development policy?
I'm not understanding your comment about facilitation, oh no, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing. It seems more like an implementation.
Yes, the way that it's written is more of an implementation action. My suggestion would be to rephrase. But I also, I think it it is a little bit redundant because we do have so many other policies related to low impact development and green stormwater management. But there, I don't, I also don't think that there's any harm per se. Um, but there, I don't, I also don't think that there's any harm per se.
Well, we're, rather than try to wordsmith it here, um, shall we take a crack at it and get it back for a later meeting?
We talking about three point seven?
Uh, no, the last EQ two comment.
Yeah, they, they had three different comments on goal EQ two, so sorry that they're a little confusing.
The one that starts new developments located, yeah, yeah. It's an implementation right now, and I'm not sure how to reword it right now to make it a policy.
My question for Director Hoffman and Christina is, don't we have this covered? Is there something missing in what we've worked through? Um, and if so, we could add something, so I, I agree with uh what you said by Chipper Toner. If we, if there's something missing, uh, and these are additional policies that we support. Uh, I, but I offhand, I would think that we've covered these concepts.
Um, we do, and especially in uh the existing and soon to be improved SMP, which I'm having a feeling they have not reviewed. Which is good, because the one we have adopted is dated, but this would be consistent as far as the comment about implementation item. Staff would agree, the word must ra- raises that issue for me. Okay, so I think we're agreed Deputy Mayor that we're going to um take a crack at making it a, a policy rather than an implementation and seeing, of course, whether it's redundant with stuff we've already got.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, I've made that note and I will be prepared for when this comes back to you in the review draft.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that, that gets us through all of their comments on EQ two. Uh, we're now looking at their comments on EQ three point seven. Um, this is another one where they have recommended incentivizing uh again, so I would ask, do we want to stick with this consider incentives for um language that we've, that we've used elsewhere?
So something like encourage and considering incentive, incentives for?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
I agree.
I think we're okay with that.
Okay. Alright, the comment on EQ three point ten adds this piece to facilitate multi-benefit outcomes for climate resilience as well as pedestrian and wildlife corridor linkages. I'm not entirely sure. Uh, when I, when I think about facilitation, I think more of, you know, a discussion, a discussion focus. I'm not entirely sure how what the city's role would be in facilitation in this regard, or if they are, if they're thinking that maybe adopting some new requirements to implement this would be that facilitation. Um, but I'm curious, I'm curious what your all thoughts are uh on this one and how, how it how you, you see the city kind of stepping into, to implement this policy.
Um, I don't think they really mean facilitation. I think they just mean that when we do um retrofit or removal of existing culverts, we look at climate resilience. That's the way I'm reading it. Um, I think the pedestrian and wildlife corridor linkages are go a little too far. Uh, so I would just say uh to restore natural waterways and um improve ki- uh, climate resilience. Or address climate resilience, keep it very short and then delete all the other word, words.
Okay.
I like the idea of bringing wildlife into this.
Okay.
Um, you know, you could have a but when you, a non, non, a non-daylighted creek can't be
Oh, I see.
Address, you know, birds can't go hang out on its bank, right? Like, so there is something about that. Bringing the wildlife to these more naturalized stream environments, uh, maybe not corridors per se, but
Right.
Just uh providing more uh appropriate
How about environment? Restore natural waterways, facilitate uh climate resilience and um improve wildlife habitat.
Yeah.
I could go with that.
We still, we still have the word facilitate though in there.
I know, I thought it was, I mean, I meant it not in the term of a facilitation, but to support, so we could use
We could use support.
Yeah, okay.
You got that Christina?
Alright, alright, so I have uh restore natural waterways, support climate resilience, and improve wildlife habitat. Yeah. Period. Okay. Alright, thank you. EQ seven point four, uh, their recommendation to me is more of an implementation action. Um, this is certainly something uh that could be considered in code updates, but this is adding, this is essentially adding an additional application requirement for projects where you need to submit a site plan.
Okay.
Yep, agreed.
Yeah.
In seven point six. Uh, they are
Seven point six, I have a suggestion. I'm just trying to move us along here.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm taking notes about our discussion to make sure that I, I don't lose anything. But it is taking me a little bit longer. I'm, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, my suggestion is to um drop the last sentence and to um say uh including encouraging property owners. Uh, so after lakeshore, after our existing lines, which put a comment, including encouraging property owners, da, 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 da. So there were a whole rest of that sentence. And then drop the city shell.
Okay.
Ollies, are you happy with my, the rest of everything?
We're good.
Just getting impatient.
I, I'm thinking of that as, as far as my property, I wouldn't want to see that. That's, that's a lot on the homeowner.
Right.
I would say along the lakeshore and, and encourage property owners to participate, period. And leave the rest out. That's what I would.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
That's fine with me.
Good.
Alright, that sounds good. Uh, we'll just drop it after um, uh, to participate.
Right.
Okay. Alright, uh, eight point one, uh, no action required. Um, updating, we'll, we'll put updating the plan as an implementation action. Um, eight point six uh is another one where they want to prioritize, I think this is one that is probably better suited for uh a look at the development regulations and implementation. But this would add some additional, um, I guess, retention work analysis on the part of Director Hoffman's department uh during, during permitting. Uh, and I think that addressing it through development regulations is probably more appropriate.
And it is already in critical areas. Oh. Alright, so we're not uh taking any of the red language that I gather?
No, not this time.
Alright. Sounds good.
Okay. Alright, um, that, I think did we do eight point seven? Oh, eight point seven. No action required. This would be another one that we would implement through um potential code amendments. Uh, and that takes us through EQ.
So no, that's already in critical areas ordinance already, right?
Okay, great. Luckily, the last two elements are really short. Uh, so on housing, the first comment, there's no action required, and the second comment on H two point two, I'm recommending um that we just accept uh their comments related to connected network, parks and open space. Um, I think that that is really consistent already with a lot of the city's goals and policies uh to improve walkability and connection.
Yeah, I think uh, are we, we got a thumbs up on that. Thank you.
Great.
Okay.
Alright, we already did capital facilities, so that takes us down to parks, trails and open space if you're following along on the comment sheet. Um, they have two more comments here. Uh, their comment on PT two, I'm suggesting we rephrase as a more policy-oriented language and incorporate it. Um, and then similar with PT four, since this is also kind of written as an implementation action.
So for PT two, I don't know if we want special consideration, but I think we can include consideration of these trails by uh as wildlife habitat and corridors.
Yep.
I'd simplify it a little bit.
Are we okay with the shell language?
You can um not do it.
Yeah, I would, I would incorporate the consideration of wildlife corridors into the, the existing policy sentence, and I can, I, I can certainly do that for the next review draft.
Okay, that sounds good. Alright, what y'all think about PT four, which uh that's, it looks like a new one, yeah.
Yeah. And this is something, this is something that maybe um can be discussed with public works when that position is filled.
That's, that's what I was
Because, I, I, there are, there are definitely some like staff and cost considerations uh that that person would be better, better equipped to address.
So we give it a pass then?
A pass for now, yeah.
Yeah, a pass for now.
Okay. Alright, we did it. We got through DFW's comments. Um, that brings us to the new suggestions uh presented by council member.
Uh, Council Member Goldman has a question.
Um, yes, actually, I was thinking we might go back to you five point five. I think City Attorney, City Attorney Pratt might have an update for us regarding that. But that was the one about natural gas and like, and energy.
Oh, great.
Do, I, so, looking at the initiative, and my suggestion is to just add in front of what you already have as allowed by state law. Cause you're not allowed to discourage the use of natural gas or encourage um electrification. And I think you would just avoid some issues if you added that language as allowed by state law in front of it.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Let me switch back to my slides. Okay, so uh, future land use designations, uh, we discussed at length, um, the best way to consolidate and simplify the various designations that uh are currently in the comp plan, and this was the suggestion um, to, to keep this conservation residential with a goal of preserving larger lots to grow the urban forest, increase climate resilience, reduce stormwater impacts from development, protect sensitive areas and meet growth demands. Um, the description would be a little bit, a little bit longer than that. But it, it is, um, it speaks to this goal. This residential zone will provide small-scale development like single-family uh housing, accessory dwelling units, courtyard housing, et cetera, while ensuring the expansion of our urban forest and preservation of our creeks, wetlands, critical areas and shorelines. Development within this classification shall encourage increasing tree canopy coverage and the preservation of significant and landmark trees. Uh, there's a placeholder for whatever this next category of residential is named, um, but these parcels uh with important critical areas such as que- creeks, wetlands, steep slopes may be considered for this designation upon a rezoning request. Uh, that still captures the implementing zones RS twenty and RS fifteen as the current conservation residential land use designation does as well.
And so that question, question mark residential is the second line there, so in case those didn't catch the, the connection.
Yes. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, the best time doing a small conservation residential, I mean, I'm, that's where I'm at right now.
I had, um, I had tried to brainstorm this question mark, question mark, and I think, you know, you're kind of in this spectrum of conservation to, to this higher density multi-unit. Best that I could come up with was like urban, maybe uh for this middle category.
Go ahead.
Um, I am so sorry because I missed this conversation and um, so I'm, I'm catching up on this. Um, I, I like the wording. I'm, I'm concerned about saying stacked flats. Um, in this particular case, I'd rather say duplexes. Um, and because stacked flats start to look more like an apartment building to me. Though I understand, I've seen some of the pictures where a stacked flat doesn't look like that. I just think that the concept is vague, uh, and I'd rather say duplexes, which is something that is uh better understood. I, I had raised the fact that other jurisdictions have included the maximum number of um of units uh that are required by state law, because I don't want us to um have to mandate or I don't want us to have to push from, all the way from single-family zoning to uh more than what we're mandated to have. Uh, that's my personal view, except if we want to make some exceptions for like cottage, cottage or courtyard housing on larger lots. Um, so, but uh, uh, so I just want to say, I, I'm, I'm raising, I understand that you guys discussed it and decided not to put the numerical limits in. I assume that those will be then in our regulations. Um, and so I'm okay with that, uh, with that understanding, but I just don't like, I will say, I like residential, I like conservation residential. I like these, I like these uh categories, the way, and the way they're consolidated and described, but I just don't like stacked flats. But I don't know if others share my concern. I will give up if others like the word stacked flats.
I think, um, I think we're, there's a minimum different number of types that we have to accommodate under the middle housing law. And so I think we're, we'll be revisiting this very detailed next year, so it could be whatever it wants now. I have a distinct feeling that there'll be tweaks um as we actually develop our, our real middle housing codes.
Is it a problem to replace stacked flats with duplexes?
It, it isn't for me, because it is a duplex. It's just not a common vertical wall. It's, it's
I'd rather, because people can, I think, will picture a duplex more, you know, innocuously than a stacked flat. But I understand it's a, a, you could have a duplex that is stacked, right?
And, and the other sort of weird configuration sandwich.
So that would, that would make me happy if we could replace that with duplex.
Yeah, yeah, I can make that change.
Anybody have a name yet?
What about general residential, since it's the largest grouping uh within the entire city that could
I'm okay with that.
Okay, yeah, I think we're getting head nods on that one. So let's go with that.
Awesome, yeah.
Yeah, we'll start there.
Uh, and then I, I also saw there, there was a question about whether it made sense to include the Southern Gateway Residential within this uh category. I, I think it does um make sense, but uh that was a, a question that was highlighted.
Yeah, okay, getting head nods here too.
Okay. Um, my only, my only comment aside from the name was on this term residential scaled density. Where I wondered if maybe we wanted to call it human scale or something. Instead.
I think that was just trying to avoid the idea of people think they're apartments. You know, that it still has a residential scale, but there is also density there. I mean, cause we have, like, by state law.
So which word?
But I'm okay with residential. I don't know, colleagues have a, a concern.
He's residential, understood, you know, okay, yeah. Yeah, I think we'll get more questions if we put human there, so.
Okay, I just, because we're also using residential to, to describe this multi-unit category, that's the next layer of density. Um, I just didn't want it to be confusing. But if we're happy with the way this reads, then I will leave it be.
I think we'll be okay. Yeah, thanks. I appreciate about it.
Okay, and then the second set of land use designations uh for discussion is this uh kind of a rebranding of neighborhood business to neighborhood commercial. Um, and then corridor commercial, which includes the corridor commercial and uh the, the corridor and transition areas within the Southern Gateway. And this would set us up for some of the policies related to an expansion of kind of these neighborhoods serving commercial opportunities.
And I think one of the things this is trying to do is it's, it's trying to identify the neighborhood commercial is like around these sort of nodes, commercial nodes where the the businesses are gathered together. They maybe look more businessy versus sort of neighborhood business or residential businesses that might be in home businesses. So it's just trying to give us a different differentiation between that.
Right, kind of looks like we're good with it. Um, and my question is that these changes will diffuse throughout the document, right?
Yeah, yeah, we'll make sure that these, that these get incorporated anywhere that they come up when we do our final review. Um, we'll make sure also that the, the future land use map is updated to reflect these changes. Um, yeah, we'll take care of that.
Right, thank you.
Okay, uh, so that, that includes our uh discussion on land use designation. So the last two pieces are further discussing equity and justice as terms uh or language to emphasize throughout the plan. And then some discussion also of parks and trails. Um, but I know that we have spent quite a lot of time on this item. Do I need to table these two pieces for a future meeting?
But I say on equity versus justice, I think we've gone through and made changes throughout. So I know this was presented to us by the planning commission. But I think we've done a good job of, of, of phrasing what we want to say throughout the document. So I think we can skip on this one. We've used equity, we've used um opportunity, um, you know, access to opportunity. We've, uh, I think we may have justice someplace. We've talked about historical inequities. Um, so I feel like we don't need to have this broad conversation, cause we've tailored it to the language as we've gone through. That's, that's my personal view. And so that it came to us from the planning commission, but we've kind of addressed it um line by line.
Yeah, and so I re-brought this up. I'm giving people the same opportunities doesn't get the same outcomes, right? We've seen this before. So justice is actually not just simply giving everyone the same opportunities, but it's changing the system so that their successes are the same. Oh, you've got the trees. Okay.
I brought the trees back. I saw that you had clipped it in your, in your comment.
So you can see equity on the right is, yeah, someone's been given a boost, so they have the same access to the tree, but there's still fewer apples. Right? And justice is fixing the tree. And then you don't have to give unequal you know, efforts to one group over the other, because their access is the same naturally, because you fix the system. So this is a it's sort of a bigger vision of how do we fix our system as we move through our policies to make sure that we're doing what we can so that the system isn't making it harder for people to have access to actual outcomes that are compatible and comparable.
Absolutely agree with you, council member Riddle, but since we're getting kind of close to the end of the whole review process. Um, was there an instance where you saw the word opportunity used in the non-justice sense as you were implying here? Because basically, I think if we see those, we should fix those. But uh, you know, uh, as to deputy mayor's comments, um, I, you know, uh, at least admittedly, my cursory view through the document didn't, didn't spot any of those.
Yeah, and I think I, I didn't go through and do a thorough review of this in the effort, in the instance that council wasn't interested in it. I didn't want to spend that time. I think this could be something that we revisit with climate action, because we're going to see a lot of addressing inequities with climate action. Uh, or the, the climate resilience piece. I just wanted to just daylight this as we're moving forward.
You mean the climate element piece?
Climate element.
Okay, great, okay, yes. Uh, okay, council member Leos for, sorry.
Uh, would it be possible just to do a word search on, for example, um inequality, equity, equality, justice and opportunity? And then we can assess whether or not there are um places in the document that we think we might want to choose a different approach. That would address, you know, whether or not we've got something that we just haven't read in the last uh
Yeah.
sweet moment.
I think definite worthwhile, but also as we actually implement these policies, we need to also consider that as we're creating our legislation as well. So that's kind of it. Has to continue. But no, I think we could do that. I just think maybe doing it with the climate, um, because we're so tight on time now. Doing with the climate.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I think we repeatedly use the language addressing historic inequities. And I think that is the essence of this justice point. So I, I, I agree with council member Lebo's suggestion that we could go through and do a quick look, but I do believe that we, I, I agree with your point, and I think that we just use more words.
Yeah.
Okay, so uh Ms. Hayworth, I'm wondering, um, I, this is a lot to ask, but do we, will we have an electronic copy that we can search of the whole document?
I, I have a copy. I can run those searches or I can upload it. Uh, it's too, it's too large to email directly. Um, but I can upload it and have it sent to one or all of you to do those, those keyword searches, uh, whatever you prefer.
What's your preference?
Yeah, I mean, I if you have something that's I can also look at PDFs, I guess. Most PDFs have, can now search words too. So if you have one that's like gotten rid of the markup and is just sort of the quote unquote more final-ish look, then we could do a quick PDF search of the keywords as well. I think that would be a smaller document.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can do that.
All right, appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Okay, um, and, and you're, I just want to end on the, the point that you are right, that you will be talking a lot about justice um during your climate element, and that includes developing the climate element, but also making changes to, at a minimum, your land use, transportation, capital facilities and utilities elements. Um, so you'll, you'll be taking a closer look at that uh in the coming months. Um, the last question was about parks planning and a question about developing kind of a, a, a target or a goal for passive versus active park space. The short answer is yes, you can definitely do this, and there are some really interesting models out there and, and ways that you can do this. Um, but I, I do believe that this would be better as an implementation action for updating the post-plan in the future.
Comments?
I think the only thing that might be policy related is to track and monitor active versus passive park distribution or something like that. And then maybe that we can, in the post-plan, there's might be a target for what that is, but maybe the policy is just to monitor and manage those uses.
Right, it's hard to a priori set a number and yeah, claim it's good. Yeah, so, all right. Um, so is that enough, Christina?
Yeah, I can, I can put together some policy suggestions for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, then next steps and schedule. Okay. It's a little slow. All right, so what, what I will be doing going forward is incorporating all of the final text changes, um, all of the follow-up, the last kind of hanger-on questions or data points that need to be gathered. Um, I will be working with the SCJ Alliance staff to get updated maps and graphic elements incorporated into the plan and complete all of the final, final formatting adjustments. Right now, we are planning, since we got through everything tonight, we are planning to have this available um on, uh, the, I believe the packet will be distributed on the twenty seventh of this month. For the twelve to December two meetings, that will be, you should have it uh to review for your Thanksgiving homework. Um, and be ready theoretically uh to do a final review and potentially a public hearing. Our fallback date for a public hearing would be December twelfth with final action anticipated on the twelfth or sixteenth uh to be able to meet our end of year deadline. So I just want to put all those dates on the radar for everyone.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you so much for setting that up.
Absolutely. Uh, and with that, I'm, I'm, I am done.
Great, all right.
Thank you again to Vice Chair for Tony for leading us through these discussions, uh, as well as thank you to Christina, of course, for working with us page by page.
Yeah, thank you very much, Christina, and thank you, Vice Chair for Tony. Sure appreciate it. And we'll look, look forward to uh passage of this um next month. Have a great evening, Christina. Take care.
Thank you.
Right, with that, colleagues, we're moving on to some more weighty topics. Again, let's take a five-minute recess if we could. Do you want to take? Let's make it eight minutes. How about that? It's on the edge, people. I can gavel it in. Okay, welcome back, everybody. Thanks for your patience. And with that, we're moving on to
Ellen, uh, Councilor, Councilwoman Saunders isn't back yet.
Okay. Well, we'll get, we'll get started. She can hear us out there. Um, we're moving on to item C, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, biannual budget and related items. Director Vaughn, you have the floor. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so we're gonna bring up a short presentation to briefly go over the requested um additions, uh modifications to the budget that is printed and before you this evening. And I'm just buying a minute. So going into the modifications of what's in the proposed budget. Um, the assumptions that are in there on the revenue front is that uh the sewer um rate increasing at five point five percent, the utility tax is what's being proposed. Basically to increase that from six percent to ten percent. In addition, for the surface water, that is being proposed to increase that utility tax for six percent, from six percent, excuse me, to ten percent. And then it's also proposing to um create a utility tax for solid waste, which is new. Um, in order to do a couple items, which is support the general fund deficit and partially fund a climate coordinator. So then walking through the proviso, um, that is also attached within the budget ordinance. Um, I'm not going to read this completely because it's, it's before you and it's in the packet. But basically, the climate coordinator um goes through and um, and there's some basically outline. Um, and we also provided a job description. That was a request that you guys have in hand that was just um produced by the HR director that's in front of you um in paper copy um to look and walk through what that would look like, or what we believe at this time it looked like. And then um, again, stating just on the second portion there, the utility tax, the solid waste, it would do a couple things. Assist with the general fund deficit and then um be, add to assist with the general fund deficit and then um eventually uh assist with a climate coordinator. So then I, just to break it out, here's the proviso continued uh walking through to the traffic safety, the new traffics, um traffic cameras, basically uh the school walk zone cameras that has a basic triggered additional staff for the court. And then on the next slide, the police department in addition. And so court was able to present a very um scaled walkthrough of additional, what additional tickets, how they believed it would produce and then turn into an FTE addition. So through this, um, it's just walking through what they believe is their addition to staff in relation to the actual physical tickets. So then, when we go to the final portion of the proviso, it's doing the exact same thing for the police department. So um proposing additional staff and um in a, for the support officer, and then we're also defining the second officer as like a traffic safety officer and um.
Point of information. Do we have a, where, where is this presentation?
It was emailed out to you? Wasn't this one emailed?
No, I don't believe it was emailed out.
Hey, we have a paper copy.
Or it's on the agenda.
The presentation?
For my email here.
Yes.
Present the presentation.
It's on the agenda, isn't it? I have it right here.
Looking.
No?
I can forward it.
Am I the only one who has it?
Thank you.
Here we have a paper copy. Thank you.
Oh, I see. Keep, keep going, or do you want me to hold?
Um.
Why don't we?
You, you may proceed. I just want a copy that I can refer to.
Why don't you continue, Lindsay, and we'll, we'll circle back if we need to.
A point of order, point of order. Clerk McLean sent, just sent it out by email.
The exact information that I'm covering right now in this presentation, just to be of assistance, is actually on page one oh six in the packet, and this proviso is literally snippets directly from what's attached to the budget um document as the, as exhibit B. So um, I, I didn't change anything. It's, it is direct um screenshots in order from the, from that ordinance.
Yeah, thank you, Director Vaughn. It is in the packet. I knew it was someplace in the, in the mix here, so.
That being said, we'll, we'll get a copy of the presentation in addition.
Chief's printing it right now.
Um, and so uh again, the um, the police recommendations, this has been discussed quite a bit in length um throughout the budget discussions about how we think that this is going to um be increased. And so then the final portion of the on the proviso. Is the addition of the proposed savings that was presented a couple meetings ago. By the council leadership. So there's a smaller or table right there. About the fleet funding strategy in order to provide some cost savings. And I am going to take a moment to to highlight that this technically is a cost savings. But really, this is deferred, a defer, a deferral of. Maintaining our fleet and replacing it. And so I'm just going to highlight that that fact. The human resources support, this is the removal of the requested point eight FTE. And the two forty seven is the value for two years of salary and benefits. The city council professional services, we reduce that travel and training. The mayor's reserved was reduced by seventy five hundred dollars. And then we've kind of seen a flat line in the mailbox program. And so we just removed that from this budget in for twenty five, twenty six. Because that just seemed like the appropriate decision to make with how that's how that's showing up for the city. So then walking into what is not directly in your packet. So the sewer, the sewer line item, basically this was the the request was to do a household presentation. So just walking through it individually before we put it all together, the sewer utility tax at six percent. It walks through at a monthly rate, bimonthly is on there because that is how we invoice all of our customers. It's not that way for surface water, but it is that way for the sewer. So I added that in to create the annual. And then if the city walked into a utility tax of ten percent, then it shows the increase. Of going up to eighty eight dollars and eighty one cents, again, the bimonthly and the annual cost. So the increase of the six percent, the ten percent is the three dollars and twenty three cents. Which then equates to annually thirty eight dollars and seventy six cents just for the sewer. So then for surface water, doing the exact same format, there's a monthly if with six percent. Monthly, it's twenty seven fifty two, annually, it's three hundred and thirty dollars and twenty four cents. And then if you walk into the. The ten percent version of that is thirty one dollars, fifteen cents, three hundred and forty two sixty four. Increasing from six to ten percent monthly, that increases a dollar and four cents annually, thirty eight seventy six. Again, presenting tables that should look very familiar at this point as they've been in multiple presentations. Just below. So then walking into the household example, which was the real request. In twenty twenty four, I went back and and highlighted the eighty one oh nine for the sewer. The twenty three ninety four for the surface water, which then equates to a total monthly amount of a hundred and five oh two. And then annually, it's twelve sixty. So then going over to the right column. Is the increase to the utility tax of ten percent at monthly increasing at eleven dollars and sixty cents. And then I broke down exactly how that what makes up that eleven dollars and sixty cents. Three dollars and twenty three is from sewer, a dollar. Oh, four is from surface water. And then the new, which is not presented in the twenty twenty four. Because that's being discussed this evening to be proposed as a new utility tax. The seven dollars and thirty three cents for the solid waste. That would be added, which would be an additional and a new cost to for a monthly basis for. Lake Forest Park residential customer. So then going into the total, you have for twenty twenty five, you've got the eighty eight dollars and eighty one cents. If you went into, if you were, if the the council elected to make the decision to increase to a ten percent utility tax. Again, surface water rate would be at twenty eight fifty five, the solid waste would be an additional seven dollars and thirty three cents. That's going back to the assumption, and I guess I didn't put it on here, of a ninety six gallon cart. There was a couple assumptions that had to be made in order to. In order to just pick, pick an item because it against solid waste, there's varying carts, varying sizes. So we just had to pick one we thought that most homeowners would would have and move forward. So then again, it's a hundred and twenty four dollars and seventy cents on the monthly basis. There's an annual amount there. And then going back to the left. It's increasing an additional nineteen dollars and sixty eight cents per month. In twenty twenty five, which also has rate increases and the solid waste utility tax. And. That I believe concludes my presentation. So my next slide is just questions, comments. So I figure I will just hold here and see if there are any questions or comments.
Thank you, Director Vaughn. Sure appreciate that. Colleagues, questions? I'm gonna go down.
I have a, I have a question. Dr. Vaughn, absolutely. Thank you. I apologize if you've already covered this and I just missed this detail. But just related to what your comment just now about the. The size of the garbage cans. So if if a household is using specifically like a smaller, the smallest size. Would that be adjusted for?
It would be ten percent of whatever their bill, their invoice is. So households that are receiving a smaller can, a thirty five gallon can, a cart. I'm sorry, sometimes they refer to them as canned carts. That would be if they're in, if their monthly bill was lower, then they would pay ten percent of that lower amount would be lower. And then if it, they have a higher, I think ninety six is, is ninety six the highest? The biggest.
I I can hop in because I I pulled this.
I'm just curious. I was gonna say, this is actually where I had some assistance.
So I chose the ninety six, yeah, ninety ninety six gallon, because that is the largest, it is the most expensive. Republic has each can at a different rate, so it would just go up. So I mean, they have a. A thirty two gallon garbage can at eighteen seventy seven that's picked up once a month. Or you can have a thirty two gallon garbage can that's picked up weekly at thirty nine dollars. And so it's just a ten percent on on that rate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Always fun talking trash. Councilmember Lebo.
If I do my math right, does that that nineteen sixty eight turns into two thirty six sixteen? Which is fifteen point six percent. Increase when you look at the rates and the taxes, is that correct?
Yes.
So we're proposing to raise our utilities by fifteen point six percent aggregate. Per annum. Which is actually more because it'll be on top of this. So it's. When you look at the total biennium, it's more than fifteen percent per year.
Yeah, yes, correct.
Thank you. Colleagues, other questions for Director Vaughn, specifically on the presentation here regarding. Utility rate. Box increases. Director Goldman. Councilmember Goldman.
Yes, so I have a question about the provisos. So the the court and the police provisos are written very specifically. In terms of very specific triggers, whereas the climate coordinator one is a bit more general. Or do you have any thoughts on whether we should make the climate coordinator proviso more specific about what the split is between? What's going to the general fund versus what is being banked for the climate coordinator?
I think that that is a, I think I would put that back as a. I'm not sure if that's a council decision that we want to be more specific. Or if we want to identify it here as a detail in the proviso to circle back. At a future date, once we have more data accurate. Because we have estimates at this time that were provided by Republic for what a solid waste utility tax would bring in. But we do, that being said, however, we don't have actual, our actual data as far as income. And so that's why you will note that it does say that basically there's a. With the intention, oh, I could go back. Sorry about that. We could all look at it together. Didn't make that connection until right now when I went to read it. Yep. Okay, within within that intention, that the official hire date be on or by December of twenty twenty five. And and I know that was proposed as in order to, we have to have a forty five day. Lead time in order for Republic to implement the tax and notice it, implement it. And then to see how that, those numbers come in. And so basically with that note, the I believe the intention was, and I would would lean on City Administrator Hill. To correct me, was to circle back at the mid biennial budget adjustment to see how the information is coming in. And revisit that conversation as far as hiring that position at that time.
Thank you, Your Buddy. And oh, actually, Ms. Minister Hill first, maybe for clarification.
Yeah, let me add some detail to that. So you remember there was a request for an exercise of banking the first year twenty twenty five. Assuming that the revenue began flowing January first, and we made assumption of a hundred and twenty eight thousand four hundred. Let me back up. The discussion at the time was a fifty fifty split. And so if we banked fifty percent of it, of the two fifty six nine hundred assumption from Republic at ten percent. That would be one hundred and twenty eight thousand four hundred and fifty. We banked that. And then at a fifty percent utility tax going into this position to cover salary and benefits. And I put scalers in there. That bank lasted us about two years. You remember that presentation. After that, you would either need other revenue funds or more from that utility tax to cover that position.
Thank you, Your Buddy.
Yes, I was gonna thank you Administrator Hill. That's what I was gonna cover is that underneath this. Is kind of a expectation of a fifty fifty split. So that half of the funding goes to the general fund. And so when we revisit at the buy, we'll be looking at the actual numbers and. Actual salary levels and so forth, because everything we have is a is a rough estimate at this point.
Thank you. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. Colleagues, any other questions? Let me make sure there's no one else on the on topic. Because we're leaving.
At risk of doing math on TV again, what's the, in your proposal with the rate increases? And the service utility tax increases, what's the total estimated revenue enhancement per year? There's about fifty five hundred households at two hundred thirty six per year.
In a previous presentation and I I removed it out of this one. I I don't know, I, whatever number I say is gonna be.
The reason I'm asking is it's it's north of a million dollars, right?
I think that's probably.
And our our annual property tax is about three point. Three point five five. Million.
Yes.
So we're proposing basically to, in comparison to increase our property taxes that go to the city by thirty percent. Equivalency.
It goes, both those will go to the general fund, so.
But it, but we're, we're gonna propose to raise the. Utility rates, service rates and taxes that will generate revenue that approximates about one third of our property tax revenue.
That is correct.
Without a citizen with, by councilmatic action.
That is correct.
That's a big hit to our taxpayers.
Thank you, Your Buddy.
I wanna, yes, I wanted to clarify that some of that is to like a user fee portion. To cover operating costs or new legal mandates. And some of it is utility tax revenue that will go to support overall. The general fund. I mean, it, so I I just wanted to say, I I think. Some of, some of this is in line with our wanting to make sure that we're covering the costs of actual city services. So when we lump it together, you kind of miss that context. But I I agree with what you're saying in terms of the impact on a homeowner. I just wanted to say, there's two pieces of it. One is the, is the cost of service kind of piece and the other is the. We need additional revenues to fill our gap piece.
And I'm gonna circle back on some previous presentations. That just really highlight the financial impact on the expenditure side that has. That are completely outside of the city's control, which I don't. It's unfortunate, but there, we we don't have control over our insurance. You know, that insurance is going up forty percent. We don't have control over our jail costs. That's kind of outside of our, what we can control. We can control our supply budget as best we can. But we still do deal with some inflation. Our consultants, we can manage it, but we we aren't experts at everything. We, it makes so much more sense to let an expert help us with a small portion of a project. Because that is their expertise and what they do for a living than to ask staff to basically be a jack of all trades. And we we just, I'll own it, your staff does a lot and we joke as other duties is assigned. But we're not experts at everything. And when it comes to something very technical, we lean to consultants because that is their expertise. And we're in this, we're in this situation and it's, it is a challenge and I I don't. I'm not sure what the best answer is. You've brought up a great point. I believe it was two years ago where Councilmember Riddle brought up. It feels like sometimes we have to do this popcorn of new revenues. And in order to create and support. Local government and a great way analogy in order to explain the situation. That we feel like we've kind of been put into because we've got our hands tied as what we define as a bedroom community. Which is a mainly, as you brought up, a property taxed based. That's our main revenue in the general, general fund. And we can only increase it at the one percent, which is thirty four thousand dollars. And the increase on just our healthcare, it's gone. And that's a, again, a cost that's not within our control. We can't manage that. We we, you know. It's, you know, we do have to offer benefits to our full time, to our employees. So it's a challenge.
I I, well, I see the amount is substantial combining both of the. Of the categories of increases that we're looking at. I do think that the the total cost per residence is is pretty reasonable. And we are going to expand our ability to have a low income waiver. For for the two that we manage. I think in the case of the solid waste. I think Councilmember Saunders raised a good point, which is if you have, if you have the small cart, which I do. You're, you're gonna pay a little bit, that will be a little bit less for you than the seven dollars and thirty cents, right? Was that what it was? Yeah. So anyway, I just wanted to say in con, I I I think that the context. Is, is, is. Helps us substantially and it is, it adds up to a lot of money, but household by household. It's a reasonable contribution, I think.
Sir Goldman and Councilmember Lebo.
Yeah, I would just make two points. The first is that I think some of this is also a pass through to the county. And we have no control over whether or not King County is raising rates. And then the second was exactly the point that Deputy Mayor Bodie made, which is that we're expanding our low income exception. And so the people, the families. And so the people, the families who most need relief from these increases will have expanded relief from them. And so that's why, that's why I'm comfortable with these proposals.
So Director Vaughn, I appreciate the comments and, um, I think we need to be, um, cognizant of what we are passing along to our, our taxpayers as citizens. And, um, my intent was to um, take what sometimes is rather opaque and make it very transparent that we are asking each household to pay roughly about two hundred and thirty six dollars a year. And to put that in comparison. So I understand the need for the revenue because we do have expenditures and we do want to maintain services with the city. But I also think it's important that we are upfront with our taxpayers about how much they are going to pay and that we are going to increase revenue through councilmatic action. Uh, in comparison to a property tax levy. And that it's useful for them to understand what we're taking. And so if we choose to ask for, um, property tax levy, that there will be comparisons of what we've done through a council action as opposed to asking the voters. There are some other municipalities where all of this would have to be asked to the voters. Not rate increases, but tax increases. And so, you know, for most households, they don't always distinguish between rate or service increase and tax increase. What they see is how much more they have to pay each year or each month. And so when you look at grocery prices and other prices, and we're asking the citizens to pay, you know, almost sixteen percent more per year. Now, we do recognize, and it's of course, that there are some pass through costs that come through the county. Um, but even if you take that out, it's still a substantial increase. And my point is, I just want to make that apparent to our taxpayers and that this is why I've been asking for how much per household they were ju- going to increase so that we just don't say it's, well, it's only a four percent increase or it's only utility increases. But that we are very clear about what we're asking our, our taxpayers to contribute for the services that we provide for them as a city, uh, for all of our benefits. I'm, I'm not looking for an answer. I'm just making a statement.
I, I would just reflect back on this whole budget season for the entire council and mayor as being very thoughtful and thorough with these decisions. And if you look back at how many meetings we've had in order to have these conversations, that I don't feel like any action or any decision that the city is making as a partnership, because that's how I see this between council and administration and together with our community. Um, that they've been, we have been doing this together transparently, and I appreciate you bringing it up um, in a complete transparent manner. But I also want to highlight that we've been trying to, or not trying, we have been doing these public meetings and very openly, um, to try to, to help you know, counsel the community. And I've been getting great feedback for myself on how to make a better document. For, again, I think the whole goal is additional transparency for everybody.
Vice Chair for Attorney.
Thank you. Um, and I appreciate Director Vaughn, you're calculating all these numbers for us so we don't have to. Um, my, my point is that I, I do agree with Councilman Beliva. Sometimes basically using percentages can be misleading. And I appreciate the fact that we now have a dollar amount that we can assign this to. And I also would caution against basically using that number to calculate a percent increase in property taxes. Everybody's property tax is so much different. And so, you know, for, for me, it's like a quarter percent or something like that. So again, it's very misleading if I say a quarter percent versus two hundred and thirty six dollars or whatever that turns out to be. So I think, uh, the fact that we actually have dollar amounts now is a very positive change than how we're reporting this. So thank you.
Thank you, our Chair for Attorney. And I just wanted to bring in the data point for comparison because we're talking about predictability. Shorelines, shoreline right now residents pay sixteen, over sixteen percent of their property taxes to the city. In Lake Forest Park currently, it's eight point two eight percent and it's dropping. It's, this is, this year will be the historical low. I, I believe ever for us down around seven, seven point some odd percent. And so if we were in the place where those revenues were coming in from property taxes, we would not be considering councilmatic action at this time. Deputy Mayor Bodie.
I, I'm sorry to speak again. Um, uh, because it's important to communicate with our community. Uh, the, the Vice Chair and I, uh, and, uh, the City Administrator and the Mayor discussed the fact that we should have a council leadership communication with the community about the adopted budget. Uh, including, uh, kind of talking about the process we went through, which by the way, we looked it up, sixteen public meetings and work sessions and two public hearings. Uh, so that surprised me. I thought there were a dozen. So, uh, it, it was a surprise. But anyway, you, you have here uh, a copy of what we have drafted to, um, to post uh, with the approval of the budget. So this is, uh, you know, not been sent out or anything. But it kind of goes through at a high level, uh, in a way that, uh, I think most people can understand the nature of the problem that we face, the, the process that we, um, have gone through to look at expenses and revenues. And then makes a link to the property tax issue. So we're not hiding that issue at all. We're linking it all together. So uh, anyway, just, um, uh, just, uh, uh, wanted to mention in the, as part of the interest in, in transparency and keeping the lines of communication open.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bodie. And on point too, I, I, on the topic of transparency, the question has arisen several times, uh, including today via email regarding the question of, um, uh, the traffic safety camera revenue, uh, the question of the new traffic safety camera fund. And could you describe the restrictions on that fund? I leave that to Mr. Hill. Or either of you.
I would just say that the, the funds that are going into, and I'll start and ask probably for some backup. Um, the funds that are being brought into the city as revenue from that it, within that traffic safety fund are very highly restricted by RCW and state statute. So the city cannot just put them into what we would define as our true general fund. Um, we have elected after thorough discussion, um, to create a sub fund, but it, it does have to be within, uh, the general fund. And so, so it's a sub fund of the general fund. It's called the traffic safety fund. And those revenues that go into that can only pay for direct expenses um, that are associated with, uh, basically with any association. So that's why we're talking about court costs because when ta- traffic tickets come in, they have to handle them. They have to, they have to process the payment. They have to, the judge has to deal with all the disputes or any type of, um, whether or not the ticket's going to be paid deferred, reduced, uh, or whatnot. And then it's touched about, I think, four, four times. And that's not if, you know, if they pay it, then it's just a couple of times. Um, and then there's the police that every single time a traffic ticket, um, a police officer has to actually review it to say, yes, this was a valid violation in order to process it as an actual ticket. So there's a lot that goes into, and it has to be direct costs. Um, it cannot go into the general fund to support, um, basically the any additional costs or just generally into that fund. Um, and then I'm going to lean on, because I think it's after three, is it after three years? Go ahead. I'll let you talk, speak from there.
You're going into the four years of the twenty five percent going into the Cooper Johnson Fund. Yeah. Yeah, that's four years out. But, um, to the mayor's specific question, the way that those funds have been allocated um, in this budget is we've done seven percent of all the sergeants and patrol officers of their salary and benefits will be paid. That's the number that the chief calculated of their time spent. Um, one hundred percent of the existing traffic officer salaries and benefits, because that is traffic safety, pure and simple. Um, and then the addition of the two, uh, new officers will be paid a hundred percent, um, salary and benefits and any, um, one of those is the traffic safety officer as well. So vehicle, anything that we need for that officer. Um, within the courts is a ten percent allocation based off of, um, what the court administrator has calculated in their time. And then any future staff would be salary and benefits covered by that as well as any, um, you know, equipment that they would need. There was a request to look at, um, a cost allocation across administration and potentially within the leadership of the, um, Police Department of the oversight of positions that review that. We have spoken to the city attorney and that is something we can do. That is not something that we have a number on for today, but it will be something we explore and add to our cost allocation. If you remember that we allocate, um, costs to funds at the end of the year. Normally, and so we've got time to calculate that during twenty twenty five to make those allocations as well. And I believe I'm forgetting something.
The senior, and then we, the senior project manager.
Oh, yes, the senior project manager, um, with the approval of this budget, moving, um, the M P D S out of the senior project managers' um, work portfolio. Um, we, you'll remember proposed eighty percent of that position would be funded by this new fund. Uh, the remaining twenty percent by the, um, the other utility funds because it does provide oversight, um, of employees within those funds. And so we can't pay a hundred percent out of that. And that should be about it.
Thank you both. Just to, just so there's absolute clarity here, because it seems like week over week, we get the same question, including during public comment la- uh, last week. Page thirty one of your budget book, uh, the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six traffic kick, safety camera fine number that's listed here is from existing traffic safety camera installations. That is fungible money that can be used for general fund purposes and has been since two thousand uh, nine, I believe, six, nine, somewhere in there. If you turn to page thirty three in your budget book, the traffic safety camera fines, these are allocated to the new traffic safety camera fund that Director Vaughn illustrated, uh, I highlighted and was, was created last week. This particular fund can only be used for statutory, uh, opportunities that are designated by the legislature, including complete streets and public safety. And that is the, the item that is listed here, and that's from the ones, ones. Thank you, Siri. One seventy eighth street camera fines. Mr. Hill, you got it.
The chief got in my ear. And I thought I should make this point as well, is that the active transportation plan that the administration, um, brought forward is also funded by these new funds, um, because they would all be safety, traffic, safety, pedestrian safety improvements, which do qualify under the legislation.
I just want to make sure everyone is clear that for, and for the community certification, because a lot of people will be watching this video later, that the money that is budgeted for twenty five, twenty six and the traffic camera safety fines on page thirty three, those mon- those monies are not fungible. They're restricted specifically under state statute. I'd be happy to give you the RCW if, if it's you probably have it.
It's listed on page eighty seven. On the expenditure side. So the next side of it, we're talking revenue on the expenditure side on page eighty seven, it's listed.
Thank you. Colleagues, other questions, uh, on proviso?
Um, not on proviso. Well, we have a general budget discussion.
Yes, yes, we will. You have. Yeah, we are just asking questions of Director, Director Vaughn right now. Are there any questions for Director Vaughn or staff? Mr. Lebo.
Or general budget questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Help me understand the, uh, traffic, uh, vehicle fund.
Traffic vehicle fund on page one oh six.
Uh, which page has the balance? And a biennial balance. I had it marked.
Um, you're looking for fund schedule balance, uh.
All right, I didn't have any stickies.
I, I didn't even have a minute to do my own, so.
And we have pump plan too.
We're believing it's on page forty two.
Page forty two.
There you go.
So.
It's not there yet. Okay. Okay.
Remind me, um, what's, so our current fund balance is one point six eight five. And, um, our proposed fund balance is two point three. So am I reading that right?
Yes.
What did we intend to spend that on?
The, I'm sorry. The, the expenditures or you're asking the actual fund balance?
The actual fund balance.
That, so, so the way that that fund works is that we do put in, um, every single year, we call it the reserve. So there's, so if we go to page, uh, this might make more sense if we go to page one oh six. That's the expenditure side. And that fund then pays for, so it's an internal service fund. So what that means, um, just as a quick overview is other funds have to put in to pay for that fund. Um, meaning it's coming from the general, the street, the, um, I'm gonna draw a blank here, of course, sewer, surface water. Cause it's mainly public works that is paid out of that, because so many of those funds have to pay in, in order to create that balance. Um, in addition, the general fund pays in because that's where the vehicle replacement is paid out of. So, um, the city has a reserve and we have a calculation that we put in every year. The challenge is that vehicles have gotten so expensive. And in order to outfit a vehicle, what we would define even in public works for a truck and having all the appropriate equipment in order to use those vehicles, what the city has previously used as a number in order to create that reserve is about half or less than half than what they cost. So the reserve, if you are budgeting to replace a vehicle in eight years and you're using that life cycle at eight years, but you're only using a dollar amount of forty thousand dollars to replace a police vehicle, that is no longer the cost. The cost to replace a police vehicle and outfit it properly is more towards seventy five, eighty, Chief? Thousand dollars. And so that is how the fund balance has been created and generated and built up. And then.
So, so if I'm re-
Am I going into too much detail?
No, not necessarily.
Possibly?
No, you always do a great job. So it's, don't worry, some, some of my questions are pointed. Um, what are we gonna spend the two point three million on? So here's where I'm gonna jump to the conclusion is, well, if we haven't programmed where we're spending two point three million on, why don't we buy some police vehicles in our coming biennial? No, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be. Where is that two point three mil? Why aren't we using?
It's not just police. That's what I'm gonna, sorry, Chief.
Okay, but.
But I'm just gonna go there because it's, it's not just police. This is public works too. And historically, I'm gonna say that.
Okay. I got a piggy bank. And I'm putting my dimes and nickels into it. And if I read this, it says that in two years, we'll have two point three million dollars in it. And the police vehicles cost eighty thousand dollars roughly. And the request is for two new vehicles. And yet we're going in two years, we're gonna go from one point six million in our reserves to two point three million dollars. My question is, why aren't we spending, I would offer to the council, we should spend the money.
And.
We should buy some police vehicles.
Uh, it's not just police vehicles.
We should buy some public work vehicles because.
Works historically has, uh, since in the timeframe that I've been here, has only purchased.
My, my, my point is that we are saying we don't have money, and yet we are actually in, we have a need which is to buy public works vehicles and police vehicles. And the fund that's intended to be used is actually gonna grow um, by seven hundred thousand dollars in this coming biennial. And we're not purchasing police vehicles. I would suggest that we should include in our budget purchasing the police vehicles that have been requested. And presumably we could throw in some public works vehicles.
Mr. Hill. Minister Hill. Oops, our customer good.
I have a question. If we buy the public's works vehicles and the police vehicles, do we have a total of what that would be, and that would? Maybe help with this conversation? So if you, if you bought all of the vehicles that you need to buy, how much is it? So we have, it would be good for us to know that anyway, so that we have a target of which to shoot for. And maybe.
If I may, it's, it's about a program. And, and it seems like. We were, we have a need. And we have money that's increasing, and so it seems like we should be investing in our public work vehicles and our police vehicles. We're not, I'm not proposing that we buy them all at once. Uh, I think the. Um, Administrator Hill and Chief Harden outlined a plan. But I think we should be investing because one of the things that'll happen is when we go to the. Citizens and say we need a levy increase, they will simply go to these numbers and say, well, you haven't been spending the money that you have. My comments aren't directed. To you, it's directed to our. Our council members in terms of how we should be investing.
So. Because this is a blended fund, money has to come from, especially for public works, right? If. If we were to. Only look at the police vehicles. That is fully funded out of the general fund. So what this is doing is it's reducing the general fund transfer, the proviso, or the, 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 or the, the work that we're doing here about the. The fleet, it's gonna, it's just preventing that money from moving out. Of the general fund so that money can be used. For other things. Does that preclude us from being able to use this fund? With the money that's in it? Or, I mean. I, I don't think so. So the. I guess the question is, how much money in there? That would be a decision, that would be a council decision, and if that was the decision that then council leaned to, um. The city would implement that decision. Uh, I would have to go back and look at. The vehicles for the police and public works and what that would equate to, um. Because the Administrator Hill, do you remember what the, what the invoice for the F five fifty was off the top of your head? Well, I guess what I'm trying to understand is because it's a blended fund. Has there in the past been enough? Like. General fund revenue that we could buy a police vehicle, or is what's left there, all the other stuff, and that's, or is it not that detailed? So I don't wanna ask for you to. Do something that we physically cannot do. In addition to that. When we look at public works vehicles, those tend to be a lot more expensive, the larger vehicles. A dump truck is. Costs are. Yes. Significantly higher than like a police vehicle. So I think. Balancing this fund, knowing that we've got some high cost public works vehicles on the horizon. And those are the things that are keeping our streets safe. Those are the things that are doing all the hard lifting of the city, keeping our roads safe. I don't see why we would want to deplete some of this fund right now. Rather than waiting until we can get those more expensive vehicles that I think are gonna be really important, given that. I think the chief feels he's in a somewhat safe place right now. He's got a couple of newer vehicles that we've already purchased. But, um, no. What I'm saying is, there's a balance.
So this.
There's a balance thing.
Let's try not to get into a back and forth here. We'll be here all night.
Okay.
So let, let, let Administrator Hill please speak.
So this is the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, so this is not just vehicles, this is other equipment, heavy equipment out of public works. Um, we, we know we have some extremely expensive equipment out there that needs to be maintained and repaired. This also increases, you know, fifteen percent for maintenance. Upcoming because of all our older fleet and to answer Director Vaughn's question, the, the new dump truck that we could. Purchase will be roughly eighty thousand dollars when all is said and done. Um, you know, if, if you wanna look at. Um, you know, dump trucks, you know, we probably got four or five hundred thousand dollars worth of vehicles that, um. We're looking to buy in the near future. Um, I would have to go back and rework the whole thing based off of, you know. We would need to dive into this five oh one fund and see what truly is there for vehicles, what we need for equipment, what we need for maintenance and, and go from there. Uh, it's not something we could answer tonight, but it's something we can work on.
Well, and I guess it doesn't change the fact that we could still have that money. Not go into the fund. Cause there's enough money in the fund. If we do decide next year that we need to purchase something, it will cover. A vehicle or two and its maintenance, so I don't see why we wouldn't. Reserve the two hundred and two thousand to stay in the general fund just to alleviate that issue.
Right. The, the money that you were talking.
Yeah, the proviso money.
Proviso money.
I don't see why we wouldn't.
Other questions for Director Vaughn? Okay. Council, what's your pleasure? Where are we?
We are.
Well, I know where we are.
Getting happy.
Okay, so.
Um.
Vice Chair for Tony.
Well, I'd like to actually start having a discussion on the general budget then, so I move ordinance twenty four nineteen twelve ninety nine, adopting the biennial budget for twenty twenty five, twenty six.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and. Seconded, and I'm gonna scroll up here to get the actual what the ordinance number. Uh, is there any further discussion? That's what. Yes. Customer relievo.
Uh, just a couple of comments. I truly believe that we need to address our climate uh, issue that's confronting us, um. I'm not in favor of including the additional funding. Into our. Twenty five, twenty six budget. When we are running a deficit to increase, um. Or the project climate project coordinator when we're running a deficit, and so I am opposed to the budget in that way. I also think that, and this is why I asked the question about, we have a need for vehicles and we're actually. Our fund balance is gonna go up seven hundred thousand dollars in our next biennium. And we aren't proposing to purchase uh, necessary vehicles. So I, I, I think we need to have a discussion about it. The other is, I very much appreciate all the work that Director Vaughn has done. Um, I've gotten this booklet when I arrived this evening, and I've been trying to thumb through it, so. I'm not in a hurry to pass a budget this evening and quite. Willing to wait till next Thursday.
Other comments, Vice Chair for Tony.
So thank you again, uh, Director Vaughn, for a very clear presentation, and uh. One of the things that I'd like to point out is that we've failed to acknowledge that we actually got three more comments. Uh, from Linda Holman, Mimi Bertram, and Tony Holman uh, tonight about basically um, in favor of hiring the climate manager in addition to the entire budget itself. So I. Can't help but think that we've had sixteen meetings on this budget, and we've had a lot of time to discuss all these things, and the fact that. Uh, these details are coming up right now, uh, it just strikes me as, um. We really need to be more prepared, and the fact is that I am comfortable with voting for this budget because we've got basically. Uh. We've made a big dent in the structural deficit that we have. Now, some of these are one-time fixes, I agree, and we need to actually address it in a larger scale. But the fact is that, you know, we've gotten comment from two public hearings, including that wonderful, uh, one, one of our uh, um, audience members gave us a notebook that had all these details. We've implemented a lot of the things that were in that notebook, some of them we can't do as described by the mayor because of the restrictions on the traffic camera revenue. The fact is, I think we've done about as much work as we can do on this right now, and sure, you're right, it's not perfect. But I think that's one of the reasons why we have mid-biennial adjustments and things like that, so that. If basically the council chooses to pick up the idea of doing a vehicle replacement in the coming months, then we have the ability to do that. So the fact is that I wanna put a pin in this and basically move forward with what the city has to do. And we really basically have several pieces of outstanding business left before us, including the comprehensive plan, right? And that's not nothing either, so we really would like to basically get a, get a decision made tonight.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Councilor Riddle.
Um, I will say I did have time to dig through this, and I did a comparison. From the original proposed budget, uh, or the uh, preliminary budget to this proposed budget. And everything synced up as far as I could tell us what we've been talking about, and one of the things I wanted to lift up is. The concern about increasing the staffing, because we see our, our F T Es are increasing. Uh, the general fund F T Es actually went down because we were able to then uh, carry some of that load in the zero zero two, so. This is doing all the things that we said we wanted a budget to do, wanted to alleviate as much stress on the general fund as possible, provide. Um. All, all of the services that the city is expecting us to provide. And it's giving us some flexibility with the provisos to move forward in different ways. I, I will reiterate, as I mentioned the other meeting. I, I would love it if this popcorn could get reduced if we end up with the levy, because I don't think we should be overtaxing our community. But I think it's, if we can consolidate some of these costs into that levy, if that's what the community decides to move forward with. I'm, would like to pull some of these back, right? But for right now, this is the tools we have. We don't have a levy lift in front of us that's more than the state uh, maximum. This is what's gonna keep us funded. I didn't see any red flags as to anything in here that we didn't already talk about. I'm more than happy to move forward with this budget as it is, stands tonight. And yes, we will have. Uh, an opportunity uh, next year at the mid buy to make any adjustments. I'm okay with the climate. Coordinator, because at this point, it's just reserving money to the side. We get to decide moving forward at the end of the ne- end of next year. Nothing in here is um, concerning to me at this time.
Uh, Council member good, I'm just gonna go right down the horn here.
I think we've had a lot of comment on the climate action person to be hired, and that's what we're here to give our residents what they ask for. So I'm okay with the budget.
Thank you, Council member good. That's Laura Saunders.
I, I feel like. Any, any decision is better than no decision, and I feel like we've. Um, have had a lot of meetings about the budget and we, um. We know what the community wants. They do um, want to have a climate action. Uh, person, I think we, we need to move forward with that, and I'm, I'm okay with the budget, and I feel like there's always, um. Room for. Wiggle, there's some wiggle room in the future if we need to. I think, I think it just. Dragging this out is. It could potentially make it look like the council really is, um. Not. Maybe not knowing what they're doing, and so I think it's better to just move forward, make a decision and just go with it. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Council member. Council member Goldman.
Yes, thanks. Um, so here's where I am at. If, if we're gonna summarize the public feedback that we've gotten about the budget. The most common comment was about getting a, a climate coordinator. And then the second most common was trying to reduce our general fund deficit. And I think the budget that we have before us does a decent job at both of those. It had, doesn't completely neutralize the general fund deficit, but it makes a big dent in it, and it also comes up with a trajectory. For hiring a climate coordinator. I am in favor of the budget. I do think there are four key areas that the council's going to need to take up next year. Uh, the first is figuring out the exact details of the climate coordinator. The second is vehicles, and at what point are we going to be able to start purchasing new vehicles for police and public works? Uh, the third is H R staffing, since we've deferred that, but that's not really sustainable, you know, we can't cancel that entirely, we do need more staffing. And then the fourth is long-term health of the city budget, and for that, um, a possible levy next year. There is a survey currently happening, um, I think all of our households have received uh, the postcard about it. And so we're gonna be hearing from hopefully a lot of members of the community about what they feel is a priority long term. So I think the budget that we have is going to address the key issues, and then there are gonna be a number of issues that we will have to have uh, continued discussions on when we get to the mid biennium. Uh, but I'm comfortable voting on the budget now.
Deputy Mirobody.
Thank you very much. I wanted to take us back a little bit in time. This was the most challenging budget. Uh, because of the dramatic increase in costs uh, in multiple sectors of our budget. At the same time that we had already used some councilmatic tools and. Wipe them off the slate of something we could use to fill the gaps. Uh, so I feel like uh, we have spent a lot of time uh, vetting this, and I, I for one have been. So pleased that the combination of revenue and expense work that we have done, again, it doesn't actually fill the whole gap. Uh, it may not be perfect, and we may want to revisit a number of topics. Uh, uh, completely agree, that's the purpose of the, of the mid buy. Um, but I feel like we should be. And, and we've gotten public comment, I would say the, the, the one thing that I've heard more frequently is. Why can't you just fill the gap with the tra- with the new traffic camera revenue, and I think we've, we're trying to continue to explain that to the community. But uh, I think that this is a, a really impressive effort, given the circumstances that we were faced with. Uh, there's always uncertainty, but I feel very good about uh, passing this budget tonight.
Thank you, Deputy Bodie. I just wanted to add, um, while it's your budget at this point, I did wanna add a couple of quick comments. Uh, we have been at this since uh, Sep- beginning of September. Um, we've had a variety of meetings as, as. Um, Deputy Bodie and Vice Chair for Tony have, have listed in their letter or referenced in their letter. Uh, you may recall the budget season kicked off ostensibly in, in June. So we have had a, a very long time to take a swing at this. I would like to thank uh, staff, Administrator Hill, and particularly Director Vaughn. The two of these folks helped pivot when. Uh, the administration became very much aware that the council is looking for the gap to be closed in terms of the deficit. I believe that the creativity by staff uh, has. Um, really helped push this in the direction that it needs to go. There's still work to do, and it's, this is one of those. You've, many of you have heard me say this before, this is one of those questions of, don't let the perfect uh, be the enemy of the very good. This is a responsible budget. It does address the question of, of hiring a climate ma- manager in the future. It also does. Um, the opportunities that were requested by members of the public for councilmatic uh, increases in revenues. We've had very thoughtful comments from members of the public about variety of opportunities for decreasing expenditures as well as increasing revenues without. Within the, the short timeframe that we actually have in this, in this regard. And I do wanna. Bookmark that, a note, I should say. That it is difficult when you have a city, a neighboring city like Shoreline who has a massive budget and massive revenues coming in. Because of full sales tax, real estate excise tax, and a variety of, of other revenue streams. Included grant funding uh, from the federal government because they have the staff to do that. It is very, it's a stark comparison to our situation here at, in this community. I, for one. Am very proud of the work that you all have done, the staff has done. When you compare us to us, some other cities outside of. Very close to us, other cities are struggling right now, and they're facing layoffs and real critical decisions that they have to make. We are not at that place, and I know that the community will continue to engage with us and making suggestions going forward about how. To fund the services they're looking at. The, the reality is beyond where we are right now, we're either dipping. Fairly deep into reserves, or we're going into a place where we're gonna have to cut levels of service. The other thing I wanna mention too, and Deputy Mirobody mentioned this uh, about. Basically, historically. We have had a significant amount over the last of five years of revenue that have come into the city. Both real, real estate excise tax that have patched various holes from capital side that. Uh, and additionally, from the federal government during the pandemic, we plugged the holes. For about five years with one-time revenues. This discussion is one. That I, I'm remiss in, I would be remiss if I did not say we should have been having this discussion a number of years ago, but the pandemic was raging, and it was a very difficult time to get public engagement. So this is not something that has crept up on us. It is, it has been in front of us for a while, and here we are. To be able to say that we are. Keeping our deficit under a million dollars for this biennium. I think is commendable to all the work that you've done and particularly to the work that Lindsay and Phil and the staff has. The departments are making sacrifices, every one of them, out of the seven or eight. Uh, employee uh, increases in staffing. We are not adding a, a single, single one out of the room, so. I think it's really important to recognize that everybody's making sacrifices, and it's important for the public to recognize that we are making those sacrifices. So that we can have a community conversation about what levels of service they wanna enjoy going forward. Having said that, I'm very positive about the future and the, and the dialogue will continue unequivocally. The, the folks that have come in here and have done so much work reviewing the. The the folks that have come in here and have done so much work reviewing the budget, providing input, providing suggestions is deeply valued, and we thank you because we are not every one of us is not an expert in every line of this budget except for Director Vaughn and Mr. Hill. And and we do appreciate the the um the different perspectives that people bring to the table in that regard. Having said that, are there any other comments that you uh friends would like to make?
Just a a procedural. So we do have several uh ordinances and resolutions.
Down the list.
And we're okay with starting at the top and moving to the bottom. That is our current process. Okay.
That's correct. Okay. Uh. And there is a uh motion of the second on the table for approving the adoption of ordinance twenty four twelve ninety nine adopting the biennial budget for twenty 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 five, twenty twenty six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any nays?
Nay.
Let the record reflect, there are six ayes and one nay. Thank you, Council, very much. We're moving on now to uh ordinance twenty four thirteen hundred loving the property tax for calendar year twenty twenty five. Director Vaughn. Quick overview, please.
So quick, quick overview on the property tax that uh we've had multiple uh presentations on. On this ordinance, um twelve dash thirteen hundred is the the there's two property tax ordinance. This is the one stating uh that the city is electing to um increase by their council manic one percent, the highest lawful levy amount. And that's a value of thirty four thousand seven hundred and thirty six dollars. And um that is the brief overview of this this ordinance.
Thank you, Director Vaughn. Colleagues, questions for Director Vaughn?
Just clarification for the record. So the assessed valuation is provided to us by King County Assessor, so we don't have any control over that. The one percent is our max, and that is based off of last year's revenue that's that came from property tax. And so what we're looking at in the dollar amount here is kind of a fixed number. There's not much we can fudge on that, so. Just wanted that kind of out there and uh said.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions for Director Vaughn?
I was gonna move if there are any other questions or comments. If not, I'd like to move the adoption of ordinance twenty four thirteen hundred, levying the property tax for calendar year twenty twenty five.
It's been moved and seconded twice uh uh for uh to adopt ordinance twenty four dash thirteen hundred, levying property tax for calendar year twenty twenty five. Colleagues, comments or question uh comments per se. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Are there any nays? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you very much, Council. And just for the record, again, that number is thirty four thousand seven hundred and thirty six dollars. Okay, uh moving on to item F, ordinance twenty four thirteen oh one, levying the general taxes for the fiscal year commencing on January one, twenty twenty five, on all property that is subject to taxation. Director Vaughn?
So this ordinance is the regular property tax levy. So this is where the table comes in, and we are discuss our new construction, the re-levying amount, and making sure that we um estimate high because we're dealing with preliminary numbers. And so that number, um again, the preliminary assessed valuation of the city is provided by King County, the Assessor's Office, and this ordinance is adopting our maximum amount of three million seven hundred and thirty nine um thousand four hundred and fifty one um dollars. And that maximum amount is not exactly that what the city is anticipating to receive, but we have to estimate a little bit high in order to make sure that we can receive everything because the um because King County is doing it on preliminary numbers, so the new construction values and some of those can change. So that's why um it's presented that way, and that is the um second component of the property tax um portion that is required by the King County Assessor's Office.
By the end of the month. Thank you, Director Vaughn. Colleagues, questions for Director Vaughn?
There are no comments or questions. I'd like to make the motion. So are there?
Nope. Question?
So so uh Director Vaughn, thanks uh for the summary. And just to as a reminder for everybody, taking that maximum amount levied and dividing by the preliminary assessed valuation gives you roughly the levy rate, correct?
Yes, and that's been presented. You can take your levy amount and divide it by um a thousand and times it by your actual, the actual proposed levy rate in order to figure out for any um property of um it within the city of Lake Forest Park.
Please.
Okay. And so it it's fair to say then that uh the city is literally looking at the dollar amount they're going to be receiving from the county, that three million, three point seven million.
That's the total, which is defined, actually, I'll circle back, and the about eight percent that the city of the whole property tax pie, about eight percent is the value of that three point seven million.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair for Tony. Deputy everybody.
So with that, I would also note before I do my motion that that means our levy rate keeps going down. Uh. And so uh, you know, if you look back over past years, our levy rate is is lower or the percentage, uh as you say, is lower. Um. So with that, I'd like to move ordinance twenty four thirteen oh one, levying the general taxes for the fiscal year commencing on January one, twenty twenty five, on all property that is subject to taxation. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance twenty four thirteen oh one, levying the general taxes for the fiscal year commencing on January one, twenty twenty five, on all profit property subject to taxation. Is there any further discussion, Council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it passed unanimously. Congratulations, Council. You just fulfilled your uh responsibilities to get this done by the end of the month for those two items. Uh. And moving on to fun things like sewer rates, uh item G, resolution twenty four nineteen eighty, setting the sewer utility rates for twenty five uh twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six.
So uh this ordinance is uh, excuse me, this resolution um is proposing to increase uh the sewer rate for the next two years um in twenty twenty five. Uh, five percent for the city of Lake Forest Park and five point seven five percent for King County, which is a direct pass through. That will be effective on January first of twenty twenty five. And then also what this resolution is proposing is to, within twenty twenty six, increase the city's rate an additional five percent. And then um King County's rate is proposing in twenty twenty six to increase at seven percent. And so effective January one of twenty twenty six, that will then go into effect. So it's doing two things. There's two tables within this resolution and um differentiating the effective dates of when they will, they will show up as effective for the residents. And that's concludes my overview of the resolution.
Thank you, Director Vaughn. Colleagues, questions for Director Vaughn on resolution twenty four nineteen eighty? Vice Chair for Tony.
So thanks again for the quick presentation, and um just to make clear, this is uh not include, this is not the utility tax. This is literally the sewer rate.
Correct. This is the direct rate for operational and any capital that goes into the sewer. Um. So we do move some of this money in to support our capital. That being said, I'm just highlighting that because we do have the Beach Drive Sewer Lift Station project uh that's going on, that's just was approved or recently approved for design.
Thank you. Colleagues, other questions? Or Director Vaughn? Okay, I entertain a motion for adoption. So. Please, Vice Chair for Tony.
Right. I'd like to move uh resolution uh twenty four dash nineteen eighty, setting the sewer utility rates for twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six.
Second.
And move and seconded to adopt resolution twenty four nineteen eighty, setting the sewer utility rates for twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. So any further discussion, colleagues? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? The ayes have it. It passes unanimously. Thank you, Council, very much. Moving on to item uh H, resolution twenty four nineteen eighty one, setting the surface water rates for twenty twenty five. Director Vaughn.
So the uh this resolution is proposing an increase of fifteen percent, ten percent of operations. Um. And then an additional five percent to fund an additional staff for the NPDES requirements that this city is required to complete. And so there's two components uh similar to, this is only proposing to increase the surface water utility rate for twenty twenty five, because similar to property tax, it has to be done, even though we're adopting a biennial budget, it has to only be done on an annual basis, because it goes um the property tax is paid for the city of Lake Forest Park in conjunction with your um property tax. So you will see it um being invoiced to the residents um through the county, through King County. And so that concludes my brief overview of the resolution twenty four nineteen eighty one.
Thank you, Director Vaughn. Colleagues, questions? Of Director Vaughn? Or in general? Okay, uh Vice Chair for Tony.
I'd like to move resolution twenty four dash nineteen eighty one, setting surface water rates for twenty twenty five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty four nineteen eighty one, setting surface water rates for twenty twenty five. Is there any further discussion, colleagues? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you, colleagues. And we're moving on to item I, resolution twenty four nineteen eighty two, setting user fees for twenty twenty five. Director Vaughn?
So the user fees being presented, um there's just a couple changes. The notary services increasing from ten dollars to fifteen dollars. This is where also you're gonna see the utility. Um. So the surf or the sewer and the uh surface water rates are also going to be presented uh within the user fee schedule in addition to the building code uh being increased by one point eight percent, a small amount, but it's a direct pass through from the recommendation from the building code. And that concludes a brief overview for the user fees of what's being proposed for the twenty twenty five user fee schedule that's attached in resolution twenty four dash nineteen eighty two.
Thank you, Director Vaughn. Colleagues, questions of Director Vaughn on resolution twenty four nineteen eighty two? Okay, hearing none, I entertain a motion for adoption. Vice Chair for Tony.
All right, I'd like to move uh resolution twenty four nineteen eighty two, setting the user fees for twenty twenty five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty four nineteen eighty two, setting the user fees for twenty twenty five. So any further discussion, friends?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays?
Aye. All right, I'm late.
It's okay. I thought I was gonna there's a joke in there somewhere. Are there any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you, Council. That passes unanimously. All right, we're moving on to item J, ordinance twenty four thirteen oh four, establishing new regulations regarding solid waste utility tax. Director Vaughn?
So uh to briefly go over ordinance twenty four dash thirteen oh four, this is the res- or man, it is getting late. Okay, this is the ordinance uh proposing uh to establish a solid waste utility tax for the city that does not currently exist. Um. That is uh charged to the uh residents through Republic and then will be remitted back to the city. Um. And that's a brief overview. So it's establishing it through ordinance to put it into our code to mirror um the sewer, the existing sewer and surface water taxes, utility taxes specifically.
We're thirty four, right? Yes. Okay, sorry, I was like wow, it is getting late, Director Vaughn. I apologize. Uh. Any questions for Director Vaughn on ordinance twenty four thirteen oh four?
Oh. Kim came up. I forget something.
I think you jumped to the next item. Is that, did I miss something here?
She frozen?
Also at least there there is a, I just want to make sure that there's a blank spot that needs to be filled in the very first whereas. It's highlighted.
Okay. Oh, oh, there uh.
Yes, the deficit balance.
Deficit.
Will happen in what year?
I had scrolled down, although that, okay, that needs to be filled in for adoption. Okay.
Thank you.
Is, thank you, Attorney Pratt.
Okay.
Is that from our sixth year?
Uh, that is in um that would be, is that tied to the the proviso? Or do we just, is that something that they?
I jumped right over the beginning.
Me too.
I went right into the meat of it.
Because uh the solid waste utility tax in the proviso was listed as to assist the general fund deficit in addition to funding the uh in a the future, the climate coordinator, project coordinator. So is it, is that the request being that we?
Ah, that's why there's a variable here. It's because of the question of whether the council was choosing to use this funding for patching part of the general fund deficit as opposed to fully funding.
Yes.
Council, what's your pleasure?
So, since we have adopted the budget and the budget did include the provisos as attachments, I think that means the provisos now in effect, correct?
That is correct. We just need to have, so this, this would be um twenty twenty five, twenty twenty five, folks. Yeah. Yeah, I apologize because I actually, when I read the packet, I jumped right past the first line of here into me. So um, okay, i- is everyone comfortable with uh unders- the understanding of of the whereas at the beginning here on ordinance twenty four thirteen oh four?
Yes.
Um regarding establishing new regulations regarding solid waste utility tax. Any questions?
Uh, it's just a Scrivners. Um. We've got uh highlighted twenty comma and colon, semicolon, and we, so it's just a Scrivners.
Thank you, John. We can strike that and and one and. Okay, hearing none, I entertain a motion for adoption.
Another point of order?
I'm sorry.
Um. If you go to section two and section five, there are some blanks about when the tax will commence. Um. It seems like those should also be addressed to on page one thirty two of the packet.
Or sorry, City Administrator Hill.
It's January first.
Ah, yeah, that was at your at your discretion, Council, so thank you. Okay, January first. Councilmember Riddle.
Uh, just another um Scrivener's error uh page one twenty nine of our packet, page four of the uh ordinance. Looks like uh we changed mayor to finance director or his or designee. I think that's
About their designee.
Cleaned up. His or her.
Right.
Or their designee.
That's true. Very, yes.
Sure.
I think we have an effective date. Um, January.
Effective date in section five.
Yeah. It commence. Um.
Oh, and section two.
Do we know that? We have the forty five days and blah, 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 and the holidays.
I've confirmed that it will be January first with the Republic.
Fantastic, then January first, right?
It might be the second, because that's a holiday.
Good point.
Vice Chair for Tony.
All right, given that, I think we've got all the Scrivener's errors, right? Okay, all right. I want to move uh ordinance uh twenty four thirteen oh four, establishing new regulations regarding solid waste utility tax as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance twenty four night thirteen oh four, establishing new regulations regarding solid waste utility tax as amended. Any further discussion, Council? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays?
Nay.
Okay, uh let the record reflect, the ayes are six and the nays are one. Thank you, Council. Uh, we're on moving on to item K, ordinance twenty four thirteen oh five, amending chapter three dot nineteen of the Lake Forest Park Municipal Code, sewer, stormwater, and surface water service tax. Director Vaughn?
And so a brief overview of the And so a brief overview of, the city already has a, an established utility tax for the sewer and the surface waters, uh, stormwater at six percent. The proposal here and um within ordinance twenty four thirteen oh five, it does state a range and so we will have to make a revision. Um, I'm ahead of this one now. We're gonna have to make a a revision in order to um elect what percentage the council, if we wish to move with the ten percent. Move it to ten percent, keep it at six or somewhere in between. And that prove, that's my brief overview of ordinance twenty four thirteen oh five.
Thank you, Director Vaughn. Colleagues, questions for Director Vaughn? What's your pleasure on the rate? Councilwoman Goldman.
Yes, thanks. Um, so we adopted the budget and the budget, I believe, presumes the ten percent increase. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So it seems like for consistency.
That is correct, Councilwoman Goldman. Any other questions, comments, Councilmember Lebo, and then, but uh, Deputy Rebo.
Um, you know, one of the things that, and I've mentioned this before, these are regressive because they're household, they're not income. And um, we are using part of our unallocated con- uh contingency. It's a, the amount that we have in our reserves is above our, our minimum by significant amount. And so do we want to lessen the burden to our taxpayers through this? Um, when we are proposing, talking about having a levy increase uh coming up in the fall? Because one of the things that's gonna be asked is, well, why aren't you using your rainy day fund? And so I I would offer that I'd I'd prefer it at six percent.
Oh, Deputy Rebo, and then.
You go.
You go. I just wanted to, uh, yes, I just wanted to say that uh, the total amount from these taxes is uh for an average customer is um eleven dollars and fifty cents a month. In addition, under L, we're going to expand our low income discount program. So I believe that this is uh both a reasonable amount and uh something that we need to do uh as, as included in our budget. And uh, we have a safety net for those households where it will prove burdensome.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Riddle.
Yeah, um, other than the fact that we already passed the budget with this amount and we'd have to go and make a revision to it tonight, um, I think we've been talking about the ten percent and um there hasn't been a serious argument um provided between now uh then and now. So I suggest that we move forward with the ten percent as is assumed in the budget.
Thank you, Councilmember Riddle. Uh, Vice Chair for Tony.
Yes, and I I'm gonna speak in favor of this uh, of this ordinance as amended. And uh, the reason is, is that, yeah, I I know that this is a regressive tax. And um, we will have a safety net as uh, as Deputy Mayor Bodie has pointed out. But at the same time, um, one of the things that I think uh, I believe was Councilmember Riddle pointed out was that if it turns out that for some reason we have a windfall in the next couple of years, we do have a mechanism by which we can reduce the tax burden on our residents. And so I'm looking, not that I see anything in the future necessarily, but we do have a mechanism that we do have set up. So I feel confident that by approving this and being able to fund our basic services, I think we're gonna, we're gonna do right by everybody.
Thank you, Vice Chair for Tony. Any other comments or, or questions on resolution, excuse me, ordinance twenty four thirteen oh five? I entertain a motion for adoption. Vice Chair, uh, Deputy Mary Bodie.
I'd like to move uh ordinance twenty four thirteen oh five, amending chapter three point one nine of the Lake Forest Park Municipal Code Sewer, Stormwater and Surface Water Service Tax with the um uh amendment to include the ten percent rate.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance twenty four thirteen oh five, amending chapter three dot one nine, Lake Forest Park Municipal Code Sewer, Stormwater and Service, Surface Water Tax at the ten percent rate. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any nays?
Nay.
Uh, the eyes have it, passes six uh in favor and one against. Thank you, colleagues. Item L, resolution twenty four nineteen eighty nine, authorizing the mayor to implement a low income discount program for sanitary sewer rate payers or to implement a low income discount program for sanitary sewer rate payers and stormwater and surface water rate payers. Director Vaughn.
So with resolution twenty four nineteen eighty nine, uh, this was requested to provide a mechanism for a low income senior discount. And so the city very quickly, um, thanks to Attorney uh Pratt and our clerk, we were able to put this together. And in order to present it this evening, in order to um present a low income and senior citizen discount that is not just for our sewer rate, but in addition, our surface water rate.
Thank you, Director Vaughn. Questions of Director Vaughn? Or staff? Vice Chair for Tony and then Councilmember Goldman.
Hi, and thank you very much for the uh summary. Um, one of the questions I had was, this does expand the uh, the program that we had previous that were just, that was just for seniors and for, I believe, the um, this income disabled, low income disabled to all low income households?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Goldman.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So the first, um, in section three, it talks about, it's a fifty percent of the local area median household gross annual income. Does that take into account the size of the household?
Uh, previous, yeah, it um, on our current uh, on our current application, it's, you have to show who's within the household. And there's varying rates. If it's a single versus, there's two people within the house, multiple.
Um, does it go beyond that? Because like a fam, like a married couple has lower expenses than a family of four.
So the, the current one is actually senior disabled, so we're gonna have to change the, the form in order, because this is becoming more expansive. So the current, I I can only speak to the current one that we have, which is not what's being proposed here. So I'm gonna have to redo an evaluation to make sure that it qualifies. And if Attorney Pratt might step in.
So HUD calculations go up to a family of eight per median income, and so we can calculate, calculate it up to that size of a family for the, for the area.
And then my second question, um, there's two versions of the ordinance. If we adopt the second version, which is for both sewer and surface water, um, can a family apply for both at the same time, or do they have to submit two different applications, one for each?
I think they're gonna have to submit two applications, which is going to sound very, very silly. Um, but they're gonna have to submit two, because the city, we implement one and King County implements another. And so we're gonna need to have two in order to make sure that we have separate for, for our records. And I'm not a hundred percent sure what uh, how this is gonna how we're gonna have to work with King County in order to implement and make sure this is effectively um, once, or who's approving all of the, the allowed rates, discounts.
Okay, um, I mean, I'm in favor of the program. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of reducing as many barriers as possible. So if there's any way we can just have the person apply once and then the city just makes two copies and sends one over to the county, it would lower barriers for low income residents. So if there's any way we can do that, it'd be great.
We will look to streamline. If there's efficiencies that can occur, I just I, I don't wanna, I, I wanna be careful stating that publicly if uh, then I have to retract it. So I'd rather overstate that there's gonna be two and hopefully there can be a streamlined way to be one. I, I hear the concern and um I hear what you're asking and requesting and if we can implement that, we will absolutely will.
Okay, and, but I definitely wanna offer my gratitude that you were able to get this so quickly, because I, I do think this will be a big help for low income members of the community.
We don't do workflows on TV. So yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Goldman. Excellent questions. Councilmember Riddle.
Not to do workflow, but it does specifically, under program application, that they will be required to complete city forms. If we could just say city and county forms for right now, and then, then we can tweak it later. But that way, there's no confusion later if it turns out we have two forms. So I would uh, if, if there's, don't worry, discussion, I like to move this.
Uh, any further discussion, colleagues, for?
We have one.
Um, okay, I guess we need to decide which one we're doing, right?
Yes, so I was gonna move one of them and you guys can.
Gotcha.
Second, if you want.
So I have an if, I have an if statement then.
Perfect, okay.
If we do the second version of the form, the one that has both programs on it, there's a question on the side that says um, the billing cycles of the stormwater service versus sewer. I think they are correct.
They are correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just as if there's no question about that, okay.
Councilmember Riddle.
So I would like to move resolution number twenty four nineteen eighty nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake Forest Park, Washington, repealing resolutions seven sixty three and seventeen eighteen and replacing them with a resolution authorizing a low income discount for sanitary sewer and stormwater rate payers uh amended with uh section wherever, section four, adding city and county forms.
Okay.
And uh, this one does already have the sewer and stormwater language in it.
Second. And move in seconded to approve adoption of resolution twenty four nineteen eighty nine, authorizing the mayor to implement a low income discount.
Same thing up. I'd like to move that we suspend the three touch rule with respect to resolution twenty four nineteen eighty nine.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to uh suspend three touch rule in resolution twenty four nineteen eighty nine as amended. Uh, any further discussion of suspension of three touch rule? All of those in favor?
Sorry. Um, this is something that's going to save members of the community money uh for, for some of them. And so I think it's, it, I, there's a lot of support on the dais for it, so I think it's worth passing it.
Councilmember Riddle.
And I will say, it's an existing program that we're expanding, so I'm comfortable uh with one touch.
Okay, all those in favor suspending the three touch rule for resolution twenty four nineteen eighty nine as amended? Please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Eyes have it, it passes unanimously, moving ba- back to the main motion. Resolution twenty four nineteen eighty nine, authorizing the mayor to implement a low income discount program for sanitary sewer, sewer rate payers or, sorry. Let's see, it's the second version right here. Uh, to implement a low income discount program for sanitary sewer rate payers and stormwater and surface water rate players.
As amended.
As amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? The eyes have it. Thank you, counsel. That's excellent work. It's a very much appreciated, Director Vaughn. Uh, and with that, because this is a special meeting, we have no additional, we can have no additional. Do the trivial, the trivial thing we can do.
Right, so this is not a substantive action, so I would like to propose that we cancel this uh November twenty first meet, a special meeting that we already have um scheduled.
Uh, was there any comprehensive plan? Issues planned for that meeting? Okay.
Uh, head nods. Are we good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Consider the meeting for November twenty first, special meeting for next Thursday, canceled. And with that, I would just like to say, counsel, thank you very much for the very hard work you have all put on this. In particular, thanks to Director Vaughn and Administrator Hill for huge lift on this. Thanks to all the staff for making the sacrifices to get us where we needed to be. With that. And with that, we're adjourned.